Excellent, so I'm going to go ahead and call to order this October 11th Board of Ed Workshop. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Board, if it's okay with you, we have two public comment sessions typically. And what we typically ask from the community is that we hold public comments that are regarding things other than what's on the agenda until the end. But I know we have a big faction of the community here to talk about things that are not on the agenda. So if it's all right with you trustees, I'd love to invite our community members to share their comments with the Board right now so that they don't have to necessarily sit through the entire meeting. They can go home and be with their families if they'd like, although we would love for everyone to stay, please. Is that all right with you?
Yes.
Yes? Excellent, okay. So, community, we are grateful for you to be here today. What I'd love to do is invite any community member who wishes to speak to first be recognized. Identify yourself when you go to the podium, please, and then any organization that you might be representing at this meeting and a topic you wish to discuss. Any comments should be kept as brief as possible, relate to the agenda items only during this public period of public comment. Also, speakers should refrain from discussing personnel or individual student matters or names, and written statements can be given to the district clerk who is going to be played by Chris.
Yeah, he's right in front row.
Amazing. Thank you, Chris. Please, yes, thank you.
Good evening. Design? My name is Scott Stuber. This is the first time I've ever addressed this school board. I wanted to talk about this new DEI, actually, I think it's two years old now, DEI position. I thought it was important enough of a position for me to actually address the Board about I teach my kids to be proud of everything about themselves, their color, their hair color, their height, their weight, their eyes, everything, their skin wrinkled or otherwise. The DEI officer, or whatever the position is called, I was reading the book this morning, and I was mortified by it. Over 500 times she addresses whiteness. And it made me wonder, if you took those 500 times of whiteness and turned it into blackness, would it be okay then? I don't think it would be. You know, racism is not a systemic thing, or I shouldn't say systemic, it's not a thing that's passed down from generation to generation, it's just not. When I look at this room, I see mostly white people, but I don't see white people that are racists. When I look at the kids in our school, I don't look at all of the kids in the school and just automatically assume they're racist. And yet, that is what this book is saying about all of us that are white. And there's nothing addressed on any other color, it's only white. This isn't what I want to teach my kids. My kids are actually half-Spanish. So, but they look white. What do we teach them there? That they're wrong for being white? This is a problem for me. I'm not sure who decided on hiring this person or who vetted this person. Did we read the book? Where she talks about this racism that is passed down from generation to generation? But it's not right. It's not right for our kids, it's not right for us as adults to sit there and just assume that we're all racist because we're white. I find that really offensive. And I work in an industry, in construction, that is extremely diverse, probably the most diverse industry there is in the United States, probably in the world. And I don't see people that come from other countries and come here and just assume that we're all white racists. And, by the way, she brings up in the book that because you're in a community of all white people with all white teachers, then automatically you're a white racist. That doesn't work that way. So if someone comes from India and they come here, they're automatically racist towards the other races? That doesn't work. And it doesn't make any sense. It's not the way the world works.
That's what our policy is.
So, what I would really like to see is my kids, our kids, not being taught this in school. And I think we should further vet this person publicly so we know whether or not this is good for our kids or not. I don't think it is. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Stuber. Just was asked to remind you all that we have three minutes typically that we ask for your public comments. I think that nobody on the Board would agree that our children should come to school and be made to feel bad about themselves. And I think that, I can only speak on behalf of myself, I also would feel very uncomfortable if that's how my child was coming to school and experiencing the school. But I do know that our school and our community and the committee that did work to bring this person on to replace the person who had been here for several years before, there was a nice process that, I don't know, Ray, if you want to share the process, or if we want to talk anything about qualifications, or if you want to hold that until later, we can do that as well.
Maybe just have a few of that folks for it.
Sure, sure, go for it. Just want to make sure that everyone feels that their voices are being heard. Thank you. Sorry, please. Please, yes, please come to, yay, and I don't need to raise your hand, just hop on up there.
My name's Dom DiMartino. I have two kids in the school district. I actually met with Superintendent Blanch and I got to meet Ms. Gonzo with this morning. Never have I seen someone distance themselves from their own writing so fast. I raised specific questions over quotes in a book, could not get a straight answer, got a very roundabout response. I'm not challenging the DEI position, I'm challenging the selection of this candidate. Seems like not a lot of people read the book, and you know, it's a very easy Google search to do, supposedly she went through, met with 10-plus people, went through a very strict vetting process, but nobody seemed to read a 200-page book. And I got very roundabout answers as to why they didn't, and freedom of speech and all this stuff. My question is, do you really want this person in your classroom? And I know I only have three minutes, but here's a couple of questions, just quotes from the book, and I'd like just to think on it, and if somebody from the Board who approved this position or thought this person was a good idea can explain to me educators of white children in particular should realize that the root of the problem is how whiteness is transmitted from parent to child. Again, I couldn't get a straight answer this morning. Everybody gave a different view and tried to distance themselves from it. Racism does not cease to exist unless whiteness and a social construct ceases to exist. And she brings up deconstructing whiteness. And I can go on about the supremacist structure, whiteness as an evil, explaining to my kids how they are inherently evil because their parents passed this down to us. How is this person allowed in schools? How is this person allowed around children? Just that's the question I have for anybody who approved this, didn't do proper due diligence, it was dereliction of duty, or they were fed a bag of lies and are complicit on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiMartino. Did I get that right? Thank you so much for sharing. What I heard is that you're uncomfortable with your children having a person in the classroom. It's my understanding that this is somebody who's not directly instructing.
You know, I have a problem with this person being in the school district and employed by our school.
So just for, sorry.
Conversation.
Yeah, yeah, so, thank you. So again, I know we're not supposed to get into a question and answer, just for the edification and for the Board's perspective, typically, the Board approves, the Board does approve all of the individuals on recommendation of the superintendent of schools, but the Board is not part of the hiring process, nor is the Board part of the interview process. We can talk about that if you'd like, a little bit later perhaps.
Yeah, I just would like, I couldn't get a straight answer with those quotes I wrote off. Can some of the Board members give you their?
This is, this is, this is not typically, I don't know if Board members want to engage in this right now, but typically, this is not what we do in a Q and A.
It's a public comment.
It's a public comment. So it's for the community to share their comments, it is on the record, it will be on Channel 18 and on YouTube for folks to hear. Please, no, no, please come. If you have a comment, this is what we're here for. Share with us your comments. Yeah, yeah, get, it's.
I'm sure you have the answers more than I have comments.
Good evening, I'm not prepared, I wasn't even sure if I'll be able to make it. My name is Paulina Berg, my daughter is a middle school student. We're pretty much new to the neighborhood. I'm Russian Jew, I work in Brooklyn in a hospital where it's, we see everybody, black, green, purple, yellow, brown, white, everybody. Never do they get any difference in treatment. We came, we work hard, we pay our taxes, we raise our children. And none of my children was ever, ever hurt this issues to be addressed at home, like, oh, he's black, I'm white, I'm privileged, what is this, I'm privileged? That I get up 3:00 in the morning, I work all day long to treat all of you regardless of your color? Why do we call it even privileged? So I'm here to, I want to hear your answers. Because obviously, you guys know why we're all here today, because of a new person is hired. Obviously, we know what's the issue, and you guys look nervous for some reason already, but we want to hear the answer. Also, I want to know, do we, as taxpayers of this neighborhood, do we pay for this person?
Yes.
We do, right? I'm right about that. So please, give us the answer, because it's not going to get any easier on you or on us, or, most importantly, on our kids. What are we doing? We're going to change this every four years, or eight years maybe? Whoever is ruling the country? Is that how we teach our kids to survive in the future? I think you've got to stop, like, from these kids to stop dividing even more. But the most importantly, I'm here to hear from you guys.
She's over.
Give us the answer, what's going on, because it is a huge concern. Thank you.
Could you share with us your last name? Could you share with us your last name? I didn't get it.
B, D, Y, R, E, G, Berg.
Ms. Berg, thank you so much. So again, I just want to share that our policy is that this is public comment, it is not question and answer. I do know that folks that have had questions have had meetings set up directly with the individuals of question, and that they're doing their best to accommodate all of the schedules as long, as much as I've been told. But we are really trying to keep to the three-minute policy that the Board has set. So again, public comment, not question and answer. If you'd like to have question and answer, you can go ahead and set a meeting with the people in question. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can I have a comment for one second?
No, I'm sorry, what was the question?
We usually respond to that.
You know what, we don't really go back, actually, in fact, if we could have the next person, this is just not, this is not what the public comment is for.
So, what, just, okay, let's just mention what?
I'm so sorry, ma'am, this is public comment, so it's for you to make a comment to the Board, you have three minutes to make a comment, it is our Board policy, and then we're going to try to get through all.
She's got more time, I'm curious for you. Come up with a point.
Okay.
You can have my eye, I missed the conversation, you can have my.
Sorry?
I don't mean to be, like, offending anybody, I just want to hear one thing, when we're getting the answer, because you keep saying it's public comment, but we're here for the answer, and you decided so we can talk in the beginning, so we don't see it through your entire meeting, we might be bored, but again, we're paying for what's happening in the neighborhood, okay?
Yeah.
So, just, like, if you give us, say, okay, we'll give you the answer so and so, we maybe stop asking.
Could you ask, I'm sorry, could you just reframe exactly your question?
When is the answer coming from you guys to our question?
To which question?
I think with all three of us, ask the same question.
Ask us, if you could ask us your question, is that what you're asking for?
That's right, we are not sure what's your question.
We're not sure what specific question it is.
The question is, the particular person who is going to be teaching our children, who hired her, who made this decision, and what is happening, how it's going to be, the teachings are going to be done, and what is she going to teach about?
That, I think.
That's a good question.
Yeah, is it particular, like, is it more clear to you?
That's clear, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
And also, all the meetings you guys set up usually to answer the questions, they're in the time when normal people are working. So 9:30 AM or 10 o'clock with Dr. Blanch, or 4:00 PM with this person who is coming in, we all work normally. Thank you.
Thank you. So now that we have a question, so just to clarify for everyone's edification, so the Board of Education does not participate in the hiring process of any personnel aside for the singular personnel, sitting right next to me, Dr. Blanch, right? The Board is responsible for hiring the superintendent of schools. The Board is responsible for approving the personnel consent agenda, which lives on every Board meeting that you'll see, and by a singular vote, we approve the recommendation of the superintendent. The Board is very intentionally not, we have asked to be, but we have intentionally been not invited, to participate in interviews for folks in the district historically, whether it is somebody who's interviewing for a music position, or a second-grade teaching position, or a lunch monitor position, we are not invited to be part of that process. What we do at the end of the process, when it's gone through due diligence and they've gone through the committees, including the parents and children, as I understand, there were children and parents on the committee for hiring, and then, of course, the administration, then it is brought to the Board level, in the consent agenda is when we say, you know, all in favor, you know, I use here this, and please, you're welcome to stay, we would love for you to stay. I was trying to get this so that you could have your comments, and then if you didn't want to stay, you don't have to. We're not trying to get you to leave at all, so please don't take it as that. Is that clear? Okay. So who, please, come on up, we're here.
My name's Kristen Fiumara. I wasn't planning on speaking, because I feel like I do my fair share speaking in all the Board of Ed meetings, but this is a really important topic to my, to everyone here, and involvement of my kids. So I really am going to keep this short, or try to. My questions are specifically for Dr. Blanch. As I felt my email responses were just passed on to someone else. Dr. Blanch, I'm sure you have been receiving a multitude of emails from parents regarding your new DEI coordinator, Susan Gonzoletz. As a parent of a Somers resident, I'm appalled that the new hire is being utilized with our tax dollars. Did you read Susan's book, Teaching of, as a Protest, or even listen to her podcast?
Excuse me, I just have to ask you, please.
Yeah.
It's part of our policy, I'm actually looking at the written policy right now, that the Board will not permit in public session discussion involving individual district personnel or students, especially by name. So if you wish to discuss matters involving individual personnel or individual students, including my child, your child, or anyone else's child, that you should present your comments without naming them by name and/or concerns to the superintendent during regular business hours. That is actually part of our voted-in policy as the Board of Education.
The protection for.
And protection for the public, including all of us that are here.
I mean, but you just stated that he does the hiring, so you've actually stated his name too. But anyway, I won't mention anyone's name anymore going forward. How are Ms. Gonzoletz's teachings going to be inclusive without being exclusive? I find it hard to believe she will be able to successfully teach without confusing our children more than they need to be. In her book, she uses a word, whiteness, 596 times. So when I read her book and I listened to her podcast, the first thing that came to my head was actually racism. So to my understanding, the new DEI requisition was put on, indeed, 32 people were applied, 12 were interviewed, two passed through, but there was no internal candidates in our school that wanted to take on this position. No teacher wanted part of this, and I wonder why. But my main question is, to everyone, did you actually read the book? And what were your thoughts behind it? Because everyone here felt disgusted after reading that book. I work full-time, I work 40 hours, my husband works past, beyond 40 hours, my children are not privileged. I barely see my kids when I get home. I end my day at 8:00 every day, I say goodnight to my kids, and that is it. I provide a beautiful life for my children, it is not a privilege, it's what we choose to do. So when I read her book, I was absolutely disgusted. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Fiumara. Any other community members wish to make a comment? Please.
Hi, my name is Addis Dosell. I hate speaking in public, I'm going to say that. And I have a new book to read, because I had no idea about the book. I'm mostly here to speak about my concern with the new DEI person having very little experience in special needs. All I see written is race. And my concern is, where, what about the rest of the children in the community? Where do they lie? And yes, I did apply to join your See It, I applied last night, I only saw the video, and I was really concerned about how, and then I looked at her LinkedIn and her bio, and how do we hire somebody who basically has a one-lane highway, basically, like you are just here to speak about race? Where's your experience with special needs? Where's your experience with every rainbow of the colors of our children? Whether their insides, whether they have anxiety, whatever it is that they have, it can't just be about race. So I'm just more concerned about the rest of our children, what happens? How is this person going to fit in into helping the special needs community? How are they going to bring us together? I know so much about equity, I could write a book on equity. Diversity, diversity does not divide. Diversity should be to include, inclusive, inclu, I wrote notes and I'm not reading any of them, but there's more to DEI than just race. And from looking at her LinkedIn and her bio, all I see is race speech. I would love to know how she's going to help the special needs community, how she's going to help the children who are having issues at home, whatever they are. This is the role of a DEI. Like, it's not just about race, it's about everything else that comes with it. Because if we just focus on race, it's going to divide this town. We need to focus on more than that. So it would be nice, when I look at her resume and her experience, to see that you guys were thoughtful in picking somebody who would represent everyone in this community. And I know you guys can't give answer, but that's food for thought, as you're going through things and as you're coming up with your agendas, in the hopes that you include all children, not just the black or white community as far as you're concerned with whatever issues. You understand what I'm saying.
Could you just share with us your name? I'm so sorry, I didn't.
Addis, A-D-Y-S, last name Dosell. And by the way, one more thing, sorry I might go over, I absolutely adore this town. And if you listen to her podcast, she destroyed this town. She made us seem so ignorant, so backwards, like, we live in, an hour away from New York City, we're not in, like, I don't know where, but, and I really hope we're not the next step for her writing her next book, of using Somers as, like, a topic. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dosell. Again, I can't speak on behalf of the Board, but I do want to say that your point about we don't just hire a one-lane highway? Absolutely. It can't just be about race. I would say that that is exactly what this conversation has, has to be about, is that it has to be inclusive of all of our students, including our students with special needs, including our students who have anxiety or a host of other differences. And I think that that's exactly what the community needs, and I think that that's probably what the school was looking to hire. But again, I have to keep reiterating that the Board approves the individuals that are set forth by the superintendent. I know it's not the answer that you want to hear, and we'll keep responding, you know, in opening comments. But thank you.
I just hope that her methods and her teaching is not just going to be purely on what she's known for. I mean, I don't even know about the book, I, this is really, so I have to read the book now, but what she's known for in social media and in her latest, that's where my understanding of who she is has come.
And your comment is duly noted, I wrote down, diversity does not divide, it should include. And I think that that's beautiful, we'll share it back with the folks in the community to make sure that it's documented. I just wanted to respond to the fact that you made a comment that we should be thoughtful in picking someone for the community. I just wanted to highlight, again, the Board's role in picking that person, just to make sure that it's clear.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, trustees.
Hey, everybody. My name is TJ McCormick. It's been a while since I've appeared before the Board. The last time, like this, I'm sorry, sure. Last time I was here, it was another controversial issue, it was the drunk bus driver. And ever since then, I've paid attention, I've commented on social media, made my big mouth heard that way, and I've kind of stayed away because I've always felt, oh, they can expect me to show up and yap, and I hate, I don't, you know, I don't like playing a role. And I'll do my best to be brief, because we all do have to get home at a decent hour, and I, myself, have to get on that genetic lottery privilege express to Grand Central. Sorry, Madam President, but that was a golden one, and I've been waiting to use that for a couple of years now, so sorry. It's a good line.
You have three minutes.
Then, is now, yeah, okay, don't start. Then is now, we're here to commiserate, to comment, and I'm quite sure that our town, once again, is going to hold on. I'm pretty sure we're going to remain calm, and we're going to see ourselves to another day. But also now as then, I see a complete lack of ownership of this unfortunate situation. To be clear, like so many people, I absolutely see a need to ensure that our town remains tolerant, kind, considerate, welcoming, the place that it already is. So I understand a DEI role of some nature has been mandated by the state, whatever the details are, it is, or it isn't, it has to be this role, has to be that, I don't know, but I know it's there somewhere. And my issue is not so much with a radical activist who's been hired, that person could be a radical activist anywhere. My problem is with the superintendent for bringing her divisive, hateful rhetoric to Somers. What were you thinking? Why would you deliver such controversy and division to Somers knowingly? And even, and is she qualified? I mean, you know, the setting here is not, is not the urban environment that she appeared to have worked in prior. After years of being told that neither extreme incendiary racial views or rhetoric would be a part of our curriculum or policies.
Three minutes, TJ McCormick?
The school system led by Superintendent Blanch has hired a teacher to teach teachers. Extreme.
You have, you're at three minutes, sir, if you could just finish your comments and we'll cut the mic.
You're damned if you did, and you're damned if you didn't. If you read the book and you hired her, what the heck were you thinking? If you didn't read the book and you hired her, what the heck were you doing? Own it, once and for all, own it. And don't talk about caring, own it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, so pending no further public comments, I do believe that we can move into, did you want to make a comment? No?
Oh, sure.
The school success plan, or would you like to make one?
I'll actually hook up here in a second, get on there, so, again, just for the Board to clarify the process that we had talked about last year and gone through in the May springtime, with a number of members from the community on seat, as well as some of our older students and some of our faculty were on that involvement, the process went through, and this is the final candidate. As far as some of the folks that came up to speak tonight, I have either met with some of those folks individually already. My administrative team has also met with some of them. My administrative team has also met with some of those folks and will continue to do that until that is exhausted. This is not a show, this is a board meeting. And so the reality is here is that I will be here. We will arrange our meetings at any point in time that works for individuals. The reality is here, the position that is hired is to support our school district as best we can to make an inclusive environment for all of our children and all of our families. And even one of the things that Susan went last week, I believe, and she spent a good long time meeting with our special education, PTA, at the town park for a good long time, talking about how can I support and include all those children there. So the reality is, is here, is that I am not aware of any information of anything that's transpired in our districts for roughly the 60 days she has been here that would not align directly with the roles and responsibilities of our DEI coordinator. And again, if any one of you or any of my colleagues or any community member, as a community member myself in here, graduating three children from Mr. Bear's High School, I certainly do live in this town as well too and I care greatly about the children in this town. And the fact of the matter is, is that I'm not aware of anything in any course that is taking place in the district with her time other than listening to how she can support our children in our schools and our families in our schools. So that's kind of the piece where I look at. And again, as we move forward, as the board may recall, she was here, actually, that I asked for me, up at the podium there, speaking about how she was going to work with the community. That C group is a community-based group, roughly for five years right now. We have upwards of 60 members on that group. It quite significantly grew last year, about last September, which is great. The two folks that I met with today, both said, I would like to be a part of that conversation. I thank them for willing to do that and be a part of that committee. Again, that is not a meeting for the community to come and meet with the C committee. It's an operational committee. The committee has work to do and they come and they work together, identify their work, they break out into their subgroups and things. So that is not a time for a conversation. But we are making all accommodations to anybody and everybody who likes to speak with myself or members of the team or directly with Ms. Gonzoits herself, which has already started well on its way. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Blanch.
Alright, so I think, so tonight, we have the annual conversation on the update for our school identified success plans. And so you see, we have the administrative team here this evening, so with our principals and our assistant principals and our directors of learning and things like that here this evening. So the hope is to go ahead and start that conversation again aligned with our overall district work. So this is a piece that we would be looking at doing on an annual basis. So we'll go ahead and see if I get connected up here. Kevin, would you mind checking that one connection? I'll reconnect here, please. Blink for a second. Yeah, it keeps blinking.
It's coming.
Alright, let me try that one, Kevin. I'll pull this thing together if I can. So what I want to bring up here, just actually, board, is an overview. This component actually is not in the conversation here tonight other than just kind of an introductory piece. So let me see if I can get back to my spot here. I'll just start with the piece on the right here. So thinking about the district and we'll kind of walk this part through. So as we spoke about tonight about our mission work and then where that work will guide us to, and we're speaking about tonight, in many ways, about igniting the passion each student by engaging students at a personal level to ensure they find that sex in that global society. So those are the elements that are driving all of the conversation that we'll talk about this evening is the mission for the organization. So you'll hear that come out in the conversation about each building's success plan and that work that they have going on in that regard. And so when we think about, how can we go ahead and shift that element to- Oh, I'll skip it, let me just read it out. Sorry, I need a new computer device. Shouldn't have pushed it that far. So in general, thinking about the membership, we've talked about it tonight. The members of the community, we've mentioned the seat tonight, the number of staff and faculty and everybody have involved in this conversation about how do we move ourselves, continue more and more towards the ultimate mission statement of the district. And so as we work through that piece, I would ask that we think about the overarching goals. And that's the part we're going to speak about tonight. Again, in particular, the 21st century knowledge and skills. We have three large buckets that sit inside of there. One is the 21st century knowledge and skills. The second is the social, emotional and physical wellness. And that third bucket is global citizenship. So that's what we're seeking about tonight from each one of those areas. And so when we think about those areas, we'll be talking about the goal to ensure intellectual growth and development of our children and our learners. And then we'll be thinking about, in the social, emotional, physical wellness, making sure we're nurturing that support for them and making sure that we are developing students who are global citizens. So that kind of buckets in those areas underneath, those are wide, broad-reaching goals that we'll be looking at in the organization and have been. Tonight is the intent to say, now, let's talk a little bit about what's happening kind of in each one of those buildings in those different areas. And so one of the pieces that we're also working on right now, actually had a couple of PTA meetings right now with the community. We did a middle school meeting here now, is going back to our faculty and our students and also community to say, let's talk about what the next steps for the district are looking in the future, the next five, seven, 10 years. What would that look like and feel like? And so that would be the intent where we'd be heading towards that work. So those are some of the elements that we'd be walking towards. Go ahead, Lindsay, I'm sorry.
Is there, oh-
It's trying. So with that piece, I would say that if we can then go ahead and consider where we would be in the element here. So again, just a graphic that I've got up here is the one that hopefully the organization's familiar with. Target of the whole child in the middle. There are those three buckets outside of that. The circle that supports outside of that is professional learning development for our faculty, working with our families and our communities as well as our fiscal stewardship. How do we do that, in particular this year, looking at things like our multi-tiered system of support or elementary world language? And then also looking at our social, emotional wellness support, ultimately guiding ourselves to the overall student engagement in our schools. And so those are areas that we would be looking at to go ahead and identify where we're at today and where we're going in some of our next steps. So any questions or thoughts, just again, reiterating the processes of we've gotten here and then how we would be looking at as our next steps.
So you're framing for us, Ray, the school success plan as a district level?
Yep.
And then nested underneath the district-level success plans, each of the different school success plans? So that we'll go through each of those tonight and sort of share with the community how those plans are enacted and created?
That's the intent, yes. So, yeah, lost signal again. So again, what I'll do is I'll go ahead and see if I can swish off of here. And then we're gonna go ahead to the- Yeah, I'm gonna hand it to Kevin. And we're gonna start with, thank you, Kevin. We're gonna shift to the first Primrose element there with their success plan. So as Kevin hooks up there, so you'll see a couple of documents. The first blush around, we'll see the overarching success plan of the school, school by school. And then the administrative team here is to kind of address any questions or kind of get some feedback from the board and some dialogue. And then, at the bottom of each one of those success plans, you will see, kind of going back to where we had a number of years ago, but a body of evidence or focused-in results, small kind of comment there. And so we'll be focusing on mostly the first area, the 21st century learning tonight. So we'll have that fourth, but there'll be some other areas in those areas as well. And so as we look at that piece, we'll go ahead and hopefully get that going. And then we'll come back around and look at an example of, out of a SMART goal. So, okay, so bringing it now down to the next layer of, for example, a grade level. And so if we're looking at, you know, an elementary grade level, here's what their goal is and here's what's the work that grade level is doing. Their practice is in instruction, their thoughts about professional learning development, their instructional practices, the schedule, whatever it may be, but those are the kind of elements that they're working on to ultimately hopefully increase the overall performance of the kids and things. So it wasn't just me, Kevin. Sorry, Karen, I thought it was just me. Well, it's good to know we're not, I don't know. So if we give Kevin just a second, we'll see if we can get ourselves up there.
Before Kevin's ready-
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Can you explain to everybody what the IPI process, reengage the IPI?
Sure, so that's one of the activities that you would see on our success plan. Thank you, Efe. And the board may remember, frankly, it's before COVID, about five years ago, we spent some time at the board table talking about assessing student engagement in the classroom. So it's identified as the instructional practices inventory. The gentleman, Dr. Valentine, who designed and has basically continued to fine-tune that tool over 20, 30 years. It's basically going into the classroom and trying to get an understanding of students cognitively engaged in the classroom. So when we speak about engagement, we typically break that out into three buckets. Cognitive engagement with students, their social behavior and then their emotional behavior as well too. So looking at those three different areas, that's where we look at. His particular focus is helping us look at students' cognitive engagement. So it's a direct observation of this. The unique part about this is, is that it's teachers working and connecting and looking at other teachers' classrooms. So it is a kind of a shared practice and then teachers are able to come out of those classrooms and share, boy, I was in your classroom last week, I noticed this. Can we talk about how maybe I can infuse that in my practices? So it is a teacher-driven experience where teachers are looking at, how can I most effectively cognitively create, engage students in the classroom level? So that's a perfect rule.
This is going well.
There you go.
Don't move.
Paul, if you don't, Mike, can you bring that one over once, just in case it drops off? You got an extra dongle there? Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Nobody sneezes.
Moved, Kevin. I moved?
Try the dongle, Kevin, maybe it's a bad dongle.
I got all kinds of dongles here.
Oh, but none of them are going. Yeah, it's even a USB. I don't care if it's not the dongle.
If you do that and plug-
Might be the cord. He might have a bad cord because he's on his third dongle. Thank you.
Well, if it was just the dongle connected, Kevin's that one also.
He's got like three of them. I have a fourth one if you want to try.
Maybe the fourth one's a charm?
Yeah.
I mean, probably not, but we can pretend.
Do you want to just walk up to the-
Go up to the podium, maybe, does that make sense?
No, it's only hard, that's, he's got a tired wire, it's not even wired.
I don't know. He said it's the wire that's connecting to the-
You gotta glimpse, Kevin, so we'll see where we go. Alright.
I'm moving. See anything on my screen? That's the district.
Just forward past that one, Kevin, we get to Primrose, we'll start there. Alright, we are at Primrose. So we'll go ahead and hand this over to Katie and Meg. Thank you for your patience, ladies. And we're back off. We'll keep working, but if you can speak to it, we'll do our best to get that up so the board has that in front. Looks like it's back up again, so thank you, Katie.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Blanch. Good evening to the Board of Education. So we're here tonight to talk about the Primrose success plan for our Primrose audience that is here. You've heard some of this at the back-to-school night. One of my favorite quotes I tend to use every year is, what we pay attention to grows. And at Primrose this year, we're off to a great start. And what we're paying attention to is to make sure that our foundation is solid, especially in the area of literacy and specifically in reading. So to that end, we are doing additional, we're looking at our best practices in reading and focusing in on the science of reading. We're continuing with our implementation of Fuentes and Pennell classroom instructional materials. So as you heard, each year we have brought on different components. This year, when we looked closely at our data, at our DIBELS assessments, at how our students were doing, we saw some need to take a closer look at phonemic awareness. So how our youngest learners learn to read. And that is the part of reading that is auditory. So to that end, we have brought on some new training on the first professional learning day. And today, we had training in Hegarty that is helping to look at auditory processes and look at rhyming and all of the components to solidify the basis for students learning to read or crack the code of reading. Some other, some other pieces that we are also looking at is to continue to support students that need extra support. So some students were part of a reading lab that we began last year in both of the elementary schools to help students that were performing just below grade level. And last year, we got started a little later. This year, we had our data in place and we're continuing those. We're already in week two, supporting students that need extra support. And so some other things that we're continuing to do is look at our assessments. We're looking at to have a body of knowledge to look at our students and to see who is performing at or above grade level and to see where we need some shoring up. Do you want me to talk about specifically one of the grade level goals? Okay.
If it's alright, I'm gonna, we're gonna swing around your success and we'll come back and hit the goals all at the same time. So we'll shift over. Do you have a little bit more on practices that you're doing? Thank you.
Yeah, I would think also, one of the ways that we developed our success plan was in conjunction with our teacher leadership team. Because at the elementary level, every teacher is a teacher of literacy and they all contribute to the success of our students. We began this process back last spring, looking at the body of evidence and seeing how the students were progressing with the current practices and with our current materials. And then our teacher staff was invaluable as we analyzed the data and found out what was next for our students. What else could we possibly do to reach all of the children at their personal level? Whether they were achieving at benchmark, at grade level, slightly above, or the students who are yet, not yet at that benchmark level and looking really very strategically and in a targeted way to make sure that all students were successful. And that brought to bear like a whole host of teachers in every walk of life at Primrose too, taking it back to grade levels and departments too. So it was quite a huge process, probably not dissimilar as I'm looking at our colleagues over at the intermediate school.
Before we go now, can I clarify this before I go on? The DIBELS system-
DIBELS?
Called DIBELS?
DIBELS.
DIBELS. What's the difference in the Primrose versus SIS and go on? Apparently it's the same, same system, you know, acronym for everybody. I would like to know the difference in how the measurement is made in these, from Primrose to SIS.
So DIB- So DIBELS is an assessment. It's the dynamic indicators of basic early literacy skills. And what it does for, for our youngest learners is it looks at different components each year depending on the grade level. And what it really does is breaks down the foundational skills of what you need to, what the components are that I need to have to be a solid reader. It's also a, it's a vetted dyslexia screener and it also helps us to really look at what children are gonna be successful in learning how to read. So really, that foundational level. So what happens at Primrose is all students are given this assessment three times a year. Then there are some students that may be in our AIS services that receive assessments in between that so we can target their instruction and make sure that they become successful readers. And then as it goes up through the grades, the, the components of the assessment change and then it's given to smaller groups of students to make sure that we're responding to all of their needs.
Is it a developmental inventory?
Yes, a developmental inventory.
Increasing say vocabulary account and so on, now what are-
Yeah, so at the very beginning, it could be identifying the sounds that each letter makes or that, am I able to rhyme, am I able to rhyme words? Am I able to identify nonsense words? Meaning that this is a word that has different syllables and vowels? Can I read it? Do I understand the way language works and the language of reading works?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Not on yet.
Testing now.
It was on before.
Testing. Third time's a charm. Testing.
Do you want a dongle?
Who has good eyes? It's the orange button.
The red light is on. One more time? Testing now.
Oh, thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mr. Bear.
No, thanks, Mark.
It's all good. Thank you very much. So at SIS this year, you'll hear many similarities in the areas that we're focusing on when it comes to 21st century knowledge and skills. We really are also taking a deep look at reading instruction this year, both instruction and assessment. We are continuing our work with Fuentes and Pennell mini lesson materials, following that scope and sequence of the materials as they are written, and looking at the skills and strategies to support reading development. The teachers are also engaged this year. We'd spent some time today on the professional learning day, looking at the Fuentes and Pennell Benchmark Assessment Tool and using that across the course of the year. This assessment is one that we want to add to our data collection. It's a different type of look at readers. It allows teachers to administer the assessment individually to students. And it takes a look at decoding, fluency, comprehension, and really gives a nice picture of each student as a reader. It helps with small group planning and as well as for us at the building level to also take a look globally on those areas where students may be struggling or the areas of strength and things that we can continue to improve. We do this so that we can be responsive to the readers that are in front of us. We're also spending some professional learning time on the science of reading research, as Katie mentioned, also at Primrose, with a consultant who's coming in to help us with that work. And the science of reading research is really a compilation of research. It's based on the foundations of reading. It includes best practice information on phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, comprehension, vocabulary, all those components that come together to make strong readers and what are those best practices to support those skills. We have found in our data that we've collected across the grade levels that there are some areas shown in need of improvement that we can continue to strengthen our practices. It includes the phonics and fluency piece for our readers, also looking at author's craft and text structure, vocabulary acquisition, all areas which we are digging in on and really talking about those best practices to support. You'll see from our SMART goal work when we present later, from our mini lesson work to the curriculum work, to the way we assess, also third grade being trained this year on foundations, which is an approach to teaching phonics, all goes along with those areas that we seek to strengthen up and support our readers on.
Yeah, we'll head you down to Jeff if that's all right. Thanks, Jeff.
Good evening, everyone. At the middle school this year, we're going to continue our work on the IB Middle Years Program that it's hard to believe we've been in the middle of that work for over five years now. And for those of you who don't know, NYPD is really a framework for teaching and learning that connects student learning to the real world, helps students make connections between disciplines so that their learning is more meaningful, with the hopes that we develop students who are critical thinkers, artistic, they're reflective, they're global minded. And we've been in the middle of this work for quite a while. This year, our teachers will be implementing three units inside each class at our NYPD in the NYPD structure. We'll be focusing on our assessment practices with the idea that we'd like to standardize our work. So assessing in the, in the NYPD is a little bit different than your traditional assessment. So our hope is to bring student work, allow teachers to look at that work together, look at their assessment practices to make sure that those are in line so that, and say in sixth grade, social studies, doesn't matter what teacher you have, the assessments are the same and how they're graded and how they're delivered are the same. So that work will continue this year. Today, at our, at our professional learning day, we focused on our approaches to learning. And those are kind of like the soft skills that kids need to survive, both with in school but outside of school. And talked about how we can explicitly and implicitly teach those skills and how we can't take for granted that kids know certain things, whether it's about how to present or how it's, how to take notes. So our teachers shared ideas about how to teach those skills outside of a content area so kids could practice those skills within the content area. We are piloting this year our eighth grade community project, which is part of the NYPD program. So the community project is a kind of a capstone project for our eighth graders. We asked for volunteers and we had close to 50 eighth graders volunteer to be a part of our community project and I think 17 or 18 staff members who will be mentors as kids take on that work. So our hope is to pilot that this year and fully implement that with all of our eighth graders next year. All of this work, like I said, has been ongoing for, for close six, six or seven years. And this November, we are scheduled to have representatives from the International Baccalaureate come to the middle school for our authorization visit. So we are preparing for that visit now. And I have to tell you, the excitement in our building today was, we, it's been a long time coming and we're excited to have the folks here and show them the work that we've done and the work that our students have taken part in. At the middle school, we are also focusing on literacy. And our big goal this year around literacy is building a body of evidence around reading. So traditionally, we have used our STAR assessment, which is given three times a year, to measure student proficiency in reading. We understand that we need more than that, so we'll look to pilot some programs and we'll talk a little bit more about that during our, talk about our SMART goal. But really, our idea is to not just rely, the big idea is to not just rely on one measure to measure reading proficiency, but to really develop that body of evidence using some of the tools that we'll, we'll talk about in a little bit.
Thanks, Jeff.
Sure, yeah. Sorry, before you give up the mic, it sounds like the approaches to learning, the PLD that happened that took place today, where you're talking about explicitly and implicitly knowing certain skills, like how to present and take notes and to practice across content areas, that sounds a lot to me like executive functioning skills that we've been talking about quite a bit that are sort of being infused into.
That is definitely part, that is definitely part of it.
And so then my wonder, not to put anyone on the spot, my wonder is, are those executive functioning skills that are really essential for all of us to understand all of our learners, are they then being shared down through the younger grades and then, of course, up through the higher grades? I'm sure the answer is yes, and I apologize, I didn't share this at a time, but.
Well, right now, in NYPD, there are 144 different skills listed. So right now, we're trying to think about how are, how are those skills taught in a meaningful way within our content? And I think naturally that happens, right? There are skills in there that are, I think you could see throughout the, throughout the continuum of K-12, to be honest with you. So there's communication skills, there are note-taking skill. I think you would see that naturally, but to call it an ATL skill, you know, at the lower grades, I don't know that we're there yet. I know Mr. Bear is going to talk a little bit about the NYPD program at the high school. And that, that definitely is related to the work that we're doing here.
Thank you. We'll just respond.
Yeah, just wanted to add to that also, if you recall, last time we were here at the board table, our specific topic for that night was on professional learning. And, you know, the topic of executive functioning, certainly coming out of COVID, is one that's on front of mind for, for about everybody, I think, in the world now. We do have a cohort of teachers that span K through 12 that are focusing specifically on executive functioning as a professional learning topic for the year. And that's one of the topics that we discussed last time as well. So what Jeff's talking about in terms of branding it as an ATL skill is something we do have to be a bit careful about, just with IB and, and the branding of the Middle Years Program versus that. But you're entirely correct to draw the parallel between and the alignment of work that we're doing across the district, specifically targeting and on supporting our students in their developing of executive functioning. So the answer, direct answer to your question is yes, we are intentionally supporting our teachers in developing student executive functioning through the grade levels, it's just not through the NYPD necessarily.
But it is a common thread.
Correct.
And you're working to make sure that there's an assessment to measure to see that it's growing and developing over time.
Correct.
Amazing. Thank you.
Sorry, I also know, I know you already gave up the mic, so I apologize. I didn't want to interrupt the crossover. But the, I know the Middle Years Program, you talk about the content literacy and I think, can you tell us a little bit about how that's incorporated into the win this year? Because I know it's like, you know, Monday.
It's, it's coming.
Nice dance.
Wait, one more.
Kevin, I don't know that.
Can you hear me?
No, not that one.
Is it still on?
Go ahead, Mark.
All right, so good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm very happy to talk about the high school's successes over the last couple of years as well as our goals for the coming year, or for the year we're in. It's no longer a coming year. I would be remiss if I didn't start by talking about the fact that about a week ago, we had our five-year review for our IB diploma program. As you know, about eight years ago, we started talking about IB through our feasibility study, particularly looking at the high school level at the diploma program. And it's hard to believe that we're now five years into it. And this is part of the requirements of being an IB world school, is that every five years you go through this review. I do want to commend publicly Allison Scanlon for the tremendous amount of work that she put into organizing the review, as well as the team of teachers who were involved in the review. And we ended last Thursday with the two folks who were here doing the review, giving us some initial feedback, and it was all incredibly positive. A lot of the things that we have been focusing on in terms of student onus, voice and choice in their learning, understanding the connectedness of their learning, which is what IB does offer us, that hasn't always been there, even though we've, we've worked on that. And the students really kind of shown throughout the entire three days that they were with the consultants. We will get a formal report probably about a month's time, and I'm assuming that at some point we'll be back later on in the year to kind of go over that. So I just want to tout that as one of our big successes. We are also continuing then, looking at the NYPD, the Middle Years Program at the high school level, so that we will have a continuum of learning from grade six through 10. We just had a kickoff learning session today for about five hours with our entire faculty. Two consultants from IB came and presented on the IB framework, on things like the conceptual understanding, a little bit about approaches to learning. We do have an active leadership and learning team who's been looking and guiding a lot of the work within our building. And we have about half of that team, there's eight subject areas in the NYPD, so about half of those subject areas, our teachers have gone through trainings already. The other half was due to go to Florida two weeks ago, right when Hurricane Ian was hitting. And so we made the decision to back out of that training and are looking to do that again later this fall. All leading to a 24, 25 school year, applying for authorization. So we're a little bit behind where the middle school is, with full authorization coming, hopefully in 25, 26 school year. And so we'll be developing units, following pretty much the same course that the middle school's gone through. Another one that we're working on, this is now under the idea of goals. As you know, we sent a group of teachers and administrators to a school out in the Midwest in Chicago, or outside of Chicago, Adelaide Stevenson High School. And one of the sessions that we sat in, we had teachers who came out of that incredibly energized by what they had heard. And it's a different way of assessing and grading students called evidence-based grading. We assembled a, so after that work, or after hearing about that and doing some work and initial research on that, we assembled a team of teachers. We've got about 20, upwards of 20 people who are involved in that work. They met at the end of the school year, as well as two times over the summer, to look at, a little bit deeper into it, what does it mean? How does it benefit students? Developing communications to go out to students and parents to better understand how EBG, which is the acronym, so evidence-based grading works. And we are piloting, we've got 19 teachers in 12 different courses piloting it this school year. And the feedback has just been incredible in terms of students taking ownership of their learning, understanding where their strengths and areas of growth are, rather than just getting a 92 and not knowing what that 92 necessarily stands for. I taught for many years. I would have a kid come in to extra help and say, what do you need to work on? And they'd say, I don't know, I want to do better on my test. This really, I think, similar to some of the assessments that you heard from both Primrose and SIS, really go down to the skill level and giving students specific, timely feedback on their proficiency with those skills. We are also in the fifth year of our embedded honors at the high school. As you know, last year, we expanded it to 10th grade and ELA and social studies, started off as a ninth grade and humanities program. We have now expanded it this year to our chemistry classes. And our math department is also looking at embedded honors. As you know, that means we no longer track our students and students have the opportunity to earn honors credit within the course when they're ready to take on that challenge, as opposed to deciding six months beforehand that they're smart enough to be in an honors level course. They can make those choices in the moment based on doing a certain level of work and a certain amount of honors levels assignments. So we're very, that's gone very well and we're happy to be expanding that this year. And then our other big focus, and we'll come back a little bit later on and talk about this, is really in the MTSS work that we've been doing, the multi-tiered system of supports. We've expanded our AIS offerings to 10th grade ELA and math. Last year it was, last two years it was only for ninth grade. In our ASC, our Academic Support Center, a lot of acronyms, surprisingly. Our Academic Support Center, we've expanded our support to more of our teachers of science in there to give support to our students. And then similar to what the other schools talked about, we really want to focus on the academic success of our children. And what we've realized, coming through COVID and coming out of COVID, it reaffirmed to us that students cannot be successful unless they're actually attending school. And we saw an increase in our absenteeism rates, and particularly with what we identify as chronically absent children. In trend or on trend with numbers nationwide, that coming out of COVID, there was, there was a, almost a doubling of that percentage. And so our goal, we started off first by reevaluating and reaffirming our attendance policies. We revamped them over the summer and we spent the first few days of school reiterating those with our staff and with our students during assemblies. Our administrative team, our dean of students, and our whole child success team is looking at data, attendance data weekly and having conversations with students who are missing classes to ask why, you know, something going on, I noticed that you've missed so many classes, particularly paying attention to what we call unexcused absences or cuts, but also those students who have accrued a high number of absences already this part, this far into the school year. And I think at that point, I'm going to pause and we're going to come back and talk about our SMART goal that then resulted out of that work.
That'd be great. Thank you, Mark. And so success plan's there, and then question, Heidi, and then we'll head into the actual sample SMART goal.
Sure. Yeah, just a quick question. When you talked about the evidence-based grading, just because it's very different from what most of us are used to, I mean, you know, some of the things that you highlighted about it sound great in terms of students getting more timely feedback and more skills based. Could you make, is it possible to just give us sort of an example of like how that might be different from a test that we might be more familiar with or how it would be graded?
We wish Tara Kearns was here. She's the one who's leading that work and is incredibly passionate about it. The team of people, you know, sitting in on their work over the summer, it, it, it really is kind of contagious. And the way that I understand it is that you, instead of marking something right or wrong, the, you sit ahead of time and look at an assessment and you develop proficiency scales. There's four different levels of proficiency. I don't know them by heart right now, but basically you're giving students clear evidence of where they fall in meeting those proficiency standards. And then the students have the ability to, the great part about it is they have the ability to continue to work on those until they get to the point where, I forget what the top one's called.
Proficiency.
It's new to us also, so I apologize that I didn't come prepared to talk about that.
So they could iterate through tests or assignments and stuff?
They can reiterate, they can redo particular assignments to make, to give evidence that they've now become proficient in those standards.
So it's not something that you'd see like within a multiple choice test, but more like for essays and things, that it's not just.
Essay, short answer, project-based, right?
Yeah, so then they get that feedback and then they can improve their answers. So it's not just like. So it's not just like, I got a lot wrong and that's done.
I think the learning office is.
But actually it makes them.
Yeah, Claire might be able to speak a little more to it.
Yeah. So, you know, kind of what we're used to, probably what we, we in school have experienced and what we're used to our students experiencing is, let's imagine day one where the course expectations go home and, and you, you get something that says along the lines of, homework is 20%, tests are 60%, class participation is 10%. And I wasn't keeping track of my percentages there. And so, and that's kind of how it is. And so each student takes a test, and they, they take a test and they get a grade out of 100 on a test, and that goes into factor into the 60% of the grade. And then they move on. And then, or you, you've done your homework or not done your homework, and so you earn whatever percentage towards that one percentage points in the homework piece. And so what ends up happening is that you might have a student who performs okay on tests, but does all their homework and shows up every day in class, and that student might have a 72. And then you have another student who does very well on tests, but is not in class and is not performing well, and is not doing their homework, and they also have a 72. And so what ends up happening is the communication of what's really happening in the classroom isn't, isn't done through the grading process. And the focus is not on the process of learning and what students are learning and the skills they're learning, but rather on the numbers of the tests. I mean, anyone who's spent any time in a classroom, the question is, what did I get? What did I get? What did I get? And is this going to count? Is this going to count? Are you grading this? And we're really trying to transfer that more to, when you leave this class, these are the things we want you to know and be able to do, and this is how you'll demonstrate it. And along the way, you're going to have plenty of opportunities to show, to demonstrate that you've mastered these skills. And each subject area has specific skills and standards set by the state that students must be, meet proficiency in in order to advance to the next level. And so it's about breaking down those standards, communicating them to the families and to the students in the room, and then providing opportunities for students to demonstrate whether or not they have become proficient in those standards or skills. And it's really, it is, it's a more of a give and take and a communication between teacher and student about what are the skills? How did you do? Do you feel you've moved on? Here's what I see. What do you know? And let's, let's keep working on this particular one, but you're good here. And let's move to the next step. And it's, it's much more about the learning and less about the numbers that really don't tell the full story.
And I think the biggest thing is, it, it moves away from the idea of averaging all those numbers together, right? So the damage of averaging is, at the beginning of a learning event, let's call it a unit, I may have really struggled and I bombed a quiz or, or a small assessment. And then at the end of the unit, I really picked it up and I understand it. That beginning event that, that I got assessed on gets averaged in. And we often hear from students, it's bringing my grade down. But they, but by the end of that unit, they've now mastered and understood it. What this does is it looks at what we call recency effect, right? So as you moved on to that learning event, their, the recency was that they've developed an understanding. They're able to evidence that through their assessment. And so that counts higher than where in the beginning. It's like, if I'm learning to play the piano, am I marked for my beginning when I didn't even know how to, what keys were what? Or am I, am I assessed based on the, the rehearsal? I'm sorry, the recital at the end where I'm playing beautifully. You don't hold a student accountable of piano for playing poorly in the beginning where they can't even do, you know, the basic keys, when at the end, they've performed beautifully in a recital. So it's, it's really focused on growth, and it really takes a look at learning, as Claire said, very clearly, at the process of learning, not the outcome of that on a single test.
I'm just wondering, to follow up on Heidi's question, this all sounds great in theory. And I know that sometimes in practice, it doesn't always work as planned. And that's, you know, we're, I'm sure you're working out the details. My wonder is, for those of us who are familiar with grades and do want to see our kids' report card and know what they're getting, is there still a clear alignment between what this evidence-based grading shows qualitatively and what we're used to as parents seeing quantitatively?
Yes. So part of the, part of the work that that group is doing is recognizing that we work and live in a system, and that system still relies on grades, grade point averages. And so there is a translation from the proficiency standards that you've met or not met into a numerical grade out of 100. We're trying to de-emphasize that grade as being the, the end-all, be-all. But it's still, we know it is important and it exists.
And being in a high school where you pride yourself on having a lot of students graduate and go to great colleges, they do need to see a grade point average. So if we don't like it, that's one thing, but the reality is we still need to see it, right? And it's there.
Yes.
So I think that's an important idea, and maybe this is further down the road, but I think it is important to consider the idea that we are used to that idea that you have to have a grade point average to get into college. And what the folks in our building who will tell you about EBG is that if you can do this well, that you can demonstrate that students have met levels of proficiency that tell you that a student is ready for college. And we are able to translate that for colleges, right? Not every, not every high school has 100-point scale across the country, right? High schools have to be able to explain how they grade. And that's one thing that the team is really intent upon doing, is making sure that they can first explain it to their students and their families, right? So right now, if you're in a classroom that is, has an EBG grading scale, you've got a really good explanation on how to read your school G-grade book, because it doesn't look like hard numbers all the time, right? So those families know that. And it's our job to continue to explain that to families as we grow this and explore this, so that it is clear. It's also our job to explain this to colleges. And then that, you know, if we were to go to a place where we have EBG across the board, that would be the job that we would have, to be able to explain that and exactly what this represents for students.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on the question, actually. Before the graduation, I'm thinking about the whole K-12. Even though we broke into the four schools, the success plan. We actually, within a school, you have grades. And I think the transition of grades are very important between schools. Primrose student going to SIS, SIS go to middle school, middle school go to high school. I don't see that plan here tells me how those transition results are measured year after year. And that's what I'm concerned. I'm here in Somers many years, okay? I want to see this, you know, second grader going to SIS this year. Next year, the second grader also goes to third grade is better, okay? And somehow, the learning, the process, the teaching method, and the results can support that. And that would be in the plan. I mean, I'm not talking about today, we want to discuss this. But hopefully, we are trying to understand the SMART goal. What is the results at the end SMART goal produce year after year? Perhaps when next semester, we have similar meeting like this, you guys can tell us now the, you know, the success plan had produced the results. We focused on certain results. And our graduate of Primrose go to SIS is, is, you know, much better now. And the middle school kids go to high school, you know, much better now. Each year goes improvement. And that's been talked about very vaguely in the past in our school board, many, many years. I think now we're getting more systematically so focused. That's why I pay attention to your acronyms, your systems, your measurements and so on, because that's supposed to be our tools, to really get the students, you know, measured and the results measured, and we are focusing on results. So I'm, I'm just saying this before I forget, okay? At OH, I don't keep questions in my head forever. So I, I just want you to all hear that. And maybe next session we have, we'll have that, you know, work into the plan. What are the results to show us?
So I'm going to ask Katie to go ahead and speak about that. And I would say that on the Primrose plan, there's specifically information in there. It's identified at the school level, specifically identifying what performance level where students are performing right now, today, and where their target is for them to be at the end of the year. That number changes every year, particularly you're thinking about the five-year-olds, four-and-a-half, five-year-olds that are coming into school. It's different here, so the children are in front of us.
Right. Just like you said, I mean, attendance number is no more important. When you've gone after this, the other numbers, you are more, you know, interested in how the student will perform in the next school, right?
Right. And I just don't want to make the assumption where, that that doesn't exist. Like, we can't put every development, everything that's on here, absolutely does. The building, the collective teacher leadership team identified, look, we had a 100%, increase of our kids almost here that are now absent. We need to get them into school before we can get them access.
I was glad to see that a priority, because if our kids aren't in school.
No, no, I'm not saying that's not important. Now, suddenly you have to fix, that's, that's high priority. But I'm looking at a higher level.
And, and then, so we'll kick it off Primrose. And now Katie walks through now the next layer of a little bit about overarching. Again, you will see on the overall success plan, the focus of results, that represents the entire, you know, population of kindergarten first and second. Then Katie will kind of walk us through right now into, I think Katie had pulled up an example of first grade, I think we've got, so that'd be great. So here's what first grade is exactly doing.
Yeah. So when, when we're looking at, how do we measure our success across the year? We are, you will hear about the assessments, traditional assessments that we give at Primrose, including DIBELS, which we were focusing on tonight, our Renaissance Star, our Fuentes and Pennell Benchmark Assessments, our Foundations Assessments and IXL. So there's lots of assessments all the times in addition to teacher assessments. So what we are looking at globally across Primrose is we are looking to increase our ELA proficiency. In September of this year, it was 63, 63%, and we want to increase that to 77% in ELA. So when our students first came through the door, very little instruction. Sure, this accounts too for some summer slide. 63% of our students were at or above benchmark. And our building-wide goal is to increase that to 77% for ELA. In mathematics across the board, for our first and second graders, we had 70% of our students come in at or above benchmark. And our goal across the year is to increase that to 80%. And then when we drill down, I spent, we spent a lot of time talking about the pillars of literacy and phonemic awareness and the DIBELS assessment. And what our teams are doing is really focusing closely on DIBELS as our monitor, the three times a year, and then for students below benchmark in between those assessments, so we can make sure that everybody's in good shape. So we started the year with 66% of our first graders performing at or above benchmark in DIBELS. And we set a goal that 80% of our students will be performing at or above benchmark by the end of the year. So as we know, expectations grow across the year, and we are going to continue to give them good instruction, more instruction, differentiated instruction, so that we can help them, so that we can help all students grow. Our goal is 80%. We'd love to see it higher. And our teachers will be working every day to, you know, to ensure the success of individuals.
There's a lot of, oh, sorry.
In years past, what does the percentage change normally?
The percentage change is typically around 10%. A surprise this year was in kindergarten. I can, I can say that on our kindergarten goal this year, only, I think it was 22% of our students came in.
At DIBELS.
At DIBELS, at or above proficiency. So that was like a pretty, that was a shocker. Whereas last year, 39% of our kindergartners. That's walking in the door. That's not a day of instruction. That might be students who didn't attend preschool or, or curtailed preschool experiences because of COVID. You know, but it even gave us more will or fight to go back and look at the underpinnings of reading instruction. And today, all of our teachers during the professional learning day were trained in Hegarty. So if you think of all of that rhyming and breaking up sounds and nursery rhymes that children may not have had exposure to, you know, that's what we're looking to do to shore up those experiences. They have a lot of other skills, technology skills, and there's a lot of other skills our students come to the table with. But we want to make sure that they come to the, to the table with, with basic literacy skills that are solid and that we can build upon.
Great.
Katie, so I had a question similar, I think, to yours, Nick. We know that there's a lot of development that happens in early childhood, right? And so if you're saying from 66 to 80%, is that 80% of where they should be at the end of the year?
Yes.
It's not the 80% from the 66 at the beginning of the year? So it's including the development, right? So there, there is that growth that's connected to it, is that right?
Yes, absolutely. So that was would be the, so for first graders to grow to 80%, we're talking about 80% of first graders at the end of the year will have acquired, will be at or above benchmark for a first grader at the end of the year. So they're accumulating that knowledge across the year and more.
Or whatever, right?
And then also, when we talk about the DIBELS, when the students came in in kindergarten last year at 33%, that if you look at the first graders at the beginning of this year now being at 66%, that was a huge growth over one year's time, where we were still having some disruptions to family life, to learning life because of COVID and because of lots of things pulling on the family's time, on the child's time. So that was huge growth over one year in DIBELS.
Just curious if you'd know off the top of your head, pre-COVID, what was the intake percentage?
I don't know, I don't know off the top of my head, but we were, we were very surprised at the.
Yeah, so it did.
At the low percentages here. Yeah.
We haven't.
So what are the things with the UPK? We talked about this quite a bit when we were talking about the UPK program, is that the hope was that our kids were going to come in stronger in these early phonics skills. Are we disaggregating the data to see if that is in fact the case?
We haven't as of yet. So last year was our first year of universal pre-K.
Half a year starting in January.
Our first year, yes, the 2022. So we had 21 students who, for half of the school year, came to Primrose and were in our UPK as four-year-olds. So they, we've also had the opportunity to have wonderful conversations and professional learning with that group. So for instance, when you've heard the program foundations, it starts as early as the universal pre-K. When you heard us talk about Hegarty today, our colleagues in UPK were on that webinar with us. So, and our kindergarten, they all share a wing. Our kindergarten teachers and our UPK teachers share a wing. So there's, you know, natural conversations and professional learning that's taking place. But there'll be a really interesting cohort to watch.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to clarify, so this is one example of many different goals like this that you have. But obviously, it would take forever for you to share them all with us. And that's operational stuff that we don't need. We're looking at that higher achievement. But this is how you're getting there, how you're getting to those overall goals that we have for the district and for your school, is through a whole collection of these SMART goals with all this that you're looking at.
And the day-to-day instruction also.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
Sure. And SIS, it's a very similar thought process that we went through with our building SMART goal as well. Also focusing in for tonight, taking a look at ELA in grade three. Overarching for our building, we are also looking at increasing percentage of students meeting that tier one level, meeting grade level expectations by the end of the year. And building-wide, look at moving that from currently 73% of students to 81% of students. I know the question came up, you know, what did numbers look like pre-COVID? And how much of a slip is it? Pre-COVID, we would see grade levels perform closer to 80 to 85% proficiency by the end of the year, students meeting that tier one. So that's what we're striving to get back to. And if we could beyond, it's always wonderful, but striving to get back to that. So for grade three, our current reality is that 64% of our students are starting off the year at that tier one grade level expectations. And our goal is increasing from 64% to 80% for the close of the year. And trying to work on that in a number of ways, like I mentioned before with the success plan, from providing that professional learning on the science of reading research, from including those Fuentes and Pennell Benchmark Assessments and dissecting that information, planning instruction based from those assessments, and also providing that professional learning on foundations for grade three, and building upon that in grades four and five with word work in the classroom. Making sure that we're really following that scope and sequence of those mini lessons closely as the Fuentes and Pennell curriculum spirals, and so that students have multiple exposure to different strategies and skills over the course of the year. It's not a one-shot deal, and then moving on. We've also thought about our time usage. Of course, we have AIS supports within the school day, but we also have, once again, our morning reading lab time for those students who are at tier one level, but there are certain areas we don't want to let slip. And we want to give kids just a little extra boost in their, in their week, so offering them some supplemental support as well. Those sessions utilize the Fuentes and Pennell Level Literacy Intervention Materials, which are supplement to what happens in the classroom with the Fuentes and Pennell instruction. So this is work that we will continue over. So this is work that we will continue over the course of the year. The great part is kicking off from the summer, all departments are thinking through how their department can contribute to improving literacy for our students, from our special area people to the people working through math, science, social studies, how can everyone try to contribute to, to make this growth? We are also looking at expanding that body of evidence and how we're looking at each individual student and their performance, not just the STAR results anymore, but including that Fuentes and Pennell assessment information. We are working this year on training our AIS providers with the DIBELS assessment as well. That's something newer for us that we haven't utilized in the past, so we're eager to begin to learn about that. And also just teachers using those day-to-day anecdotes and running records from their small group instruction, and what does that show as well? What does that also add to the pictures that we make sure we're really zeroing in on those areas that we can strengthen up?
Thank you, Liz. We'll head over to middle school, I think Jen, this is your turn in a second.
So ditto. We at the middle school are also focusing on literacy. Our current reality in the building is we have sixty-two percent of our students who are performing at tier one or proficient level, and we hope to raise that building-wide to seventy-two percent. But specifically tonight, I'd like to talk a little bit about sixth grade. So our sixth grade reality is fifty-eight percent of our sixth grade students in September scored at a proficient level. Now, again, that, that number is based on one STAR assessment in September. So our goal ultimately is to raise proficiency so that sixty-eight percent of our kids are proficient, but we also want to look at what it means to be proficient. Right now, we're, we're just looking at STAR results, and our hope is this fall to pilot a couple of different programs that you've heard about tonight, one being DIBELS with a cross-section of students from each grade level. So at the middle level, that is a fluency, students do a reading in front of an adult to, to check for accuracy, and there's also a comprehension piece that can be given kind of as a, as a group assessment. So we're hoping to gain some more information about individual student needs from that pilot program. We're also going to pilot IXL. We've gone through a couple of ideas with this, but I think our latest is right now that we'll have all of our students get into the IXL program. That is a diagnostic, that the more kids are in the program, the more information we get, and we're also given skill-specific support for students based on how they do on that diagnostic. So our hope is to pilot that in the fall, take a look at the data after the new year to make sure that before we implement things in a, in a wider net or with more students, that we're getting the data that we need to help students on an individual level. So our, our teachers, once that, that pilot is in place, will take a look. If it seems like this is giving us the information we need to improve instruction, help students, help with our AIS program, we'll, we'll cast a wider net and implement that with more students. Jen's going to talk a little bit about some of the other steps that we're taking.
Quick, quick question. On the, the assessment stuff, we keep talking about DIBELS, STAR, you know, a couple of different things that we're going to start combining. Are there any other, have we talked to any other schools or anything like that, that's using this now or that combination? Are we leading the way, lagging middle of the road, or kind of where are we with that?
I, I think a lot of school, many schools use IXL. One of the advantages and one of the reasons why we decided to pilot these two programs specifically is because they're used at the younger levels. So our students know the format, we'll have longitudinal data. It's not something new that we have to worry about, kind of the format of the test or in result. We think we'll get a true measure for that. So that was part of the thinking with this pilot program, that kids will start to be familiar with these two programs, but I know at least IXL, many middle schools use.
To clarify, that was a good answer, across the schools, districts, multiple districts are also using this as well.
Yeah, so your question was, you know, where, basically where do we benchmark relative to other districts that are using the similar?
Less so, I was just curious, how many, how many others are using that? Have we just, have we bounced ideas off of others, hey, you're using it, success, failures, kind of just see if we can learn from them, you know?
Yeah, so we, we've actually formed a number of different partnerships specifically so we can make sure that we're, you know, becoming aware of what's happening in the region as well. I'm, I'm proud to say that, that Somers is certainly leading the way in the amount of information that we have and in the idea that we have significantly better vertical alignment, meaning throughout the grade levels. You heard each of the schools talk about the DIBELS assessment. I don't know of another school district that's using DIBELS in the way that we are and the way that we're piloting that, so that, and there's, there's some economies of scale that come into that as well, too. And we talk about professional learning, we talk about teachers speaking the same language. Dr. Chang, you talked about transitional periods between buildings. We are building structures that allow for our teachers to have effective communication between them as students transition. You know, we've talked at length here about our data warehousing and the, the ability that we have to track students in a, in a platform. We've had some fits and starts with that over the last couple of years because of companies changing hands, et cetera. With the current platform that we're implementing right now, we formed partnership with two different school districts who are implementing the same platform. We've visited them, we have an appointment with them to come and visit us. We went there originally, actually, to, to get some ideas from them, and we ended up giving more ideas than we got, and now that, that district is now looking to us as a model as to how to implement the platform with fidelity and, and with a vertically aligned structure. So I think the direct answer to your question is we're leading the way more than we're following in this area, and it's a specific point of pride, I think. Certainly, the data shows that we have room for growth and we have room for improvement, but in terms of aligning our structures and aligning our systems, so we're well poised to maximize the growth that we can see as a district, I think we're, we're very well positioned to do that.
So I'm going to talk about kind of the logistics and behind the scenes that are going into supporting students here at the middle school and developing their literacy. So as you know, once they transition from the elementary age to the secondary level, they're now departmentalized and are reading in a variety of different styles through the content areas. So in our win period, our teachers, through the development of our teacher leadership, have put together content literacy structures. So every Tuesday, all students are engaging in content literacy works. They rotate through the content areas in heterogeneously mixed groups, and they get to experience specific targeted skill work related to literacy in the content area. So we are just about wrapping up our first round, and that first round focused on what does it mean to be a good science reader with examples that students worked on and overall, what does it mean to be a good reader in those content areas? And then that is reinforced in the classroom proper. So students are getting this small group instruction with some of their peers from their classes on this particular content literacy area, and then they're developing those skills throughout. And we're going to be using some of these tools we were talking about in driving that instruction. What is that good instruction going to look like? What skills and strategies do our students need to be successful readers in history, in math, in science, not just in ELA? Because they're reading and exposed to quite a variety of different types of texts, and this structure allows us to kind of suit that need outside of the content area in a supplemental support for all kids. And with that, obviously comes professional learning and professional development. Our AIS team has already done a really great job in spearheading and supporting their colleagues, pushing in, helping people with lesson plan development in the content literacy classes, and we're going to be working on continuing to develop our repertoire of what that means to be a good reader in the content areas. And then outside of the school day, we are also bringing back Reading Lab, which we're starting with, I think we have fifteen students already volunteered to stay after school and receive supplemental Fuentes and Pennell reading instruction for our more struggling readers, and we'll continue to build on that group of students, adding more support outside of the school day for them.
My, my question probably is for all levels, but I was just looking at the SIS. The current reality, sixty-four percent of third grade students are at the tier one. How do you come up with the, like eighty percent means successful? Like what is that based on? How do we know that eighty percent means we've, that's our goal?
Come up with the answer?
Yes, how do you come up with that eighty percent?
How did you decide?
Why'd you decide that is the goal that you want to meet?
Why eighty-one?
And not seventy-nine or eighty-two?
Or a hundred.
Looking back really on historic information that we had, trying to get back to where we were pre-COVID, it's been a long journey, something that we continue to plug away at, but that's what we're trying to reach again so that we can then move on from there. If we can't hit what we had pre-COVID, there's things that we, we need to work on and improve. So that's why we set that for this school year.
Is that true for all levels? I'm assuming all those numbers, those benchmark numbers?
Right, and I would, I would say you guys drive into, so that is a, is a number that most often is typically used for even funding mechanisms and things like that, say, this is the level that students should be able to find success without other intervention needs at a tier two or a tier three level. So that is a general target that is expected by both state and federal requirements, say, if you're looking at numbers, you're significantly below that, it's like, then what other pieces, as Liz was saying, that we need to look at? Do we need to look at our curriculum components in there? Do we look at resources in there? Do we need to look at professional development inside there? Do we look at equity issues inside there? So when we achieve that level, our structure and system will reflect itself, it's okay, the, the core of the structure is good, now what can we do to support those children who need maybe a second tier level of support, small group intervention or things, or even a third level, they're really, really even smaller group of one-on-one instruction. So that's the mark that I would say that is a nationally kind of identified target.
Hopefully, we have Somers own reference from then on.
Yes, and, and that's, that's a part where, again, that I think the entire society, as we know, was kind of, was kind of kicked off its horse with this thing, so we're trying to get back on and saying, okay, so what we know a mark where we try to typically get at, and some students may be able to get to those marks, maybe at second or third grade, and others may get that a spot hopefully a little bit later, but we're watching those kids at an individual level to get to that level of proficiency in that regard. And then Mark, you'll take us home on the high school, thank you.
All right, so as we talked about earlier, our focus this year is really on reducing our percentage of students that are considered chronically absent from school. By New York State Education Department, that means that they've missed more than ten percent of the school year. So a few hundred and eighty days, they've had eighteen or more absences throughout the school year. So our current reality this year, we had about eighty-one students who fell into that chronically absent category, and our goal is to reduce that percentage by ten percent. Not significant when you take a look at from, you know, eighty-one to seventy-two is approximately, from the percentages, it's eighty, eight-point-one percent to about seven percent. So one percentage point doesn't seem like a lot, but we also know, working with high school students, especially coming out of the pandemic and with a lot of other social, emotional issues, that there are a lot of interfering factors as to why students are absent and then why they fall into those chronically absent categories. In terms of our strategies, we're really looking at, again, a recommitment and a, a reevaluation of our current attendance policy previous to this year, understanding the roles each person plays, so from the teachers to the administrators, dean of students, student life coordinator, director of athletics, they all play a role in that. It is something that is building wide. Students need to know that they are accountable and that they cannot find success unless they come to school, and so when they are absent, there needs to be some predictive, predictive steps that are taken, right? Someone should notice, A, that you're out, that's the teacher, right? Teachers are designing lessons and activities that are engaging, that invite students to be present to, in, in school, right? This is something that you can't, you know, we're coming out of COVID where we understood that kids could learn remotely, we were trying to shift that to say, no, what's happening in the classroom is rich and valuable and cannot be made up by just submitting an assignment. You need to be present, contributing and listening and, and engaging in that work. And then the, the review that we talked about earlier that's happening weekly from our administrative team, and then bi-weekly as well, looking at those reports that we get out of Infinite Campus. Brenda O'Shea, our student life coordinator, plays a role when we see a student who is struggling, who doesn't seem to be connected, to find a way for them to be connected, right? We feel that there's, and there's lots of research that shows, the more students feel connected to school, the more that they will attend, and so maybe it is a club or finding some kind of passion project that they need to be working on, or just to feel included in, in a, a group of students. So she's been working on that. Rob Carrera, our new dean of students, is also meeting with our ninth and tenth grade, and then Pete and Kareem each take one of the other grades. So Kareem takes the eleventh grade, and Pete is taking the twelfth grade, and really kind of honing in on those absences and getting to those interventions quickly so that they don't become habitual and problematic. So really trying to avoid that. And then Mark Haddam, in his new role as our athletic director, is also paying very close attention to attendance and attendance rates when it comes to participation in sports, and then also reinstituting our academic enrichment program where students have to attend an after-school and sometimes during community lunch, mandatory tutoring session if their grades fall below a certain level in two or more courses, I believe is the criteria for that. So we're really paying attention to a lot of different things and trying to positively promote attendance, but also holding students accountable when we do notice that there are issues going on. And we know in the lives of our students, there are things that do get in, in the way from time to time, and we want to minimize that.
Thank you, Mark.
So I have a question, if that's all right.
Good, great.
So a couple of things, the eighty-one kids who were chronically absent last year, are we looking at what number of those students are still in the school and which ones have graduated and sort of accounting for that? And then my other wonder about that data point and trying to reduce by, by ten percent or eight of the kids that'll be hopefully attending more regularly, have we seen an actual correlation between those absences and their grades or their work in school?
Yeah, for some students remarkably, they have, they can figure it out, but it's few and far between. There is a very strong correlation between high attendance, high absentee rates, I should say, and grades and performance in school. There is just a lot that happens that they're missing, and then it's a constant game of catch-up. But in terms of the students who've graduated, what happens in a high school is you get those students who graduate, but you get a whole nother crop of ninth graders coming up, and so we, we, the number doesn't necessarily change. So we, you know, we're looking at that total number of a thousand students, a little over a thousand at the high school, and looking at that and, and trying to reduce that percentage of chronically absent. So we are paying attention to those students who are still with us in ten through twelve, current ten through twelfth graders who fall into that category. So we know every year who those high flyers are and trying to hit them early, but also any new students who might be showing up, whether they're ninth grade or just new to the list.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't want to demean the data points at all. The point was just that, that we're all fairly, really vested in ensuring that our kids are successful academically, and so I think the more we can show that correlation between attendance and the scores in classes, I think it makes those numbers even more powerful, similar to the younger grades where we're looking at literacy scores, right? I mean, I don't know that those kids have as much opportunity to not show up to school as the high school kiddos do, students, sorry, but it'll be interesting.
Also part of the conversations that are happening with our administrative team and dean of students, as well as, you know, a lot of students either A, sometimes don't realize they've gotten that high of a number, so when you show them that data point, that can often be a wake-up call, but also we pull up grades and we have a conversation about that correlation. Hey, I noticed that you're struggling in these classes, do you really think it helps when you've been out four days this week from that particular class? Or you cut two times, and trying to help them make better decisions? So it's a kind of a, you know, yes, positive approach, looking at some data and some data points to help change the behavior, and then accountability measures with things like, you know, we hate to go there, but if we need to assert discipline, then we would do that as well as a way of changing that behavior around.
Mark, from, from the policy point of view, is there anything that the district should do about attendance?
We have a pretty robust attendance policy from the district.
That's fine.
And what, what I like about this is, you know, I can see it benefiting, you know, it's targeting really all students, not just those chronically absent, but it will help prevent other, you know, this focus on attendance because you're not just waiting until they are out eighteen times, but it's along the way, so it will hopefully improve attendance, even of those that weren't missing eighteen days, but.
Right, we're also being really proactive.
Plugging it along the way and making sure all the kids know it's really important to be there.
Right, and so we're also addressing cuts, so it lets the students know that we are watching. So that's an important piece, is that we aren't waiting for them to be absent for several days, we're going for the students that, that think that nobody's watching, that they're cutting English every single day. Makes a difference.
And we know students, right, word gets around, both positively and negatively, right? So if nothing's happened after I've cut fifteen times, then that kid says in lunch, oh, I cut fifteen times and no one ever said anything to me, versus I just got called to Flores's office, they're paying attention. And so that's the, the narrative we want to be spreading.
Thank you, the high school. Other schools, any questions as we kind of bring this part down? Hopefully you got a, a clear understanding of the connectivity as, as the team was talking about K through twelve. Again, even in the example that we just heard from the high school, the Again, even in the example that we just heard from the high school, the internal structures, each building has what's identified as a whole child success team. So they're looking at basically at a weekly basis about the children, where they're at, or kind of anticipating they're not on the best path. We don't need to wait till they get to meet the 18 absences. They're already on that list of kind of a, kind of a yellow list of watching. Also, looking at each one of the schools, again, back to our mission piece about engaging all learners. When we look about the engaging piece, we're talking about the academic engagement evidence there, talking about that behavioral evidence there, as well as the social and emotional engagement there. So when the team brings that information forward, it's, ah, here's, you know, Steve, he's been absent 12 times. How is he doing academically? Like Mark said, look at that. Also, is there involvement within the school some shape, form, or fashion? Are you involved in athletics or in clubs or after-school activities or volunteering with our Leo's group? Is there some involvement? Again, the, the deep body of research would say that that engagement is what we absolutely have to have to have students academically find as much success as possible. Without that, yes, you may get through school. You may go ahead and pass. You may go ahead and, and get the credits you need and graduate, graduate and move on. Yet is it reaching the mission of the district? We would say no, and that's the, that's a pursuit we're always after, of ensuring that all students are engaged. And for each student, that's going to be a little something different. And so that's a piece I commend the high schools, as well as all the other schools, looking at that body of evidence from the kids. Are they there? And knowing that some things in life happen to families. So I understand, this is a temporary situation. Here's how we can help. Oh, I didn't know that was an opportunity. Yes, it is. Let's make sure you and your family can kind of get things back on course, and here's how we can help. So that's a part that I would say is definitely typical from my understanding and my connections with others, is that, that collective look at the whole child, not just grades, but really your attendance here, as well as your involvement in school, and as well as, you know, even behavior perspective, how are we doing behavior-wise? Because often, when we see incidents like behavior pickup or lack of absences, that's more of an outwardly kind of thing that we can see a little bit easier. It's the ahead-of-time we want to see. So is there engagement? Are there some cuts and some of those things? So those early warning signs, again, we're trying to do a better job of putting out more kind of sensors out there to get an understanding of that. So I want to thank the K through team for all of that and your teacher leaders. I know you spoke about it a few times today, but the work that came forth today that you're sharing is through your teacher leader teams that you each have in your own schools and that you drive down to the grade level. And then those grade-level teams talk about the work that they're looking at there. And then again, I want to say that even like in the summer, we had over 70 of our teacher leaders coming forth to talk about how can we think about what our work is for next year and gearing towards that. So, you know, closely, you know, one in three, roughly one in four teachers, we had talking about this work in the summertime, what's our next best step? Knowing that we're not just, oh, that worked last year, let's just do it again. That's a really easy trap to fall into, but we can't. It's a different group of students that come each year. It's a different profile that they're sharing. It's a different need they have. So again, I commend everybody K through 12 and, and all the teacher leaders for that work. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, board. We just have a couple of items on the agenda here as this is a work session, so.
Thank you for reminding us. All right. So we are at the board discussion.
The NISBA.
The NISBA resolution. So Heidi, you're, you're in charge of this.
Yep. Okay. So this is a little new for us this year, and we have not really weighed in too much with a voice before, but I had sort of, I had shared most of this in an email for you from before. So in my role as liaison with Westchester Putnam School Board Association, I learned a lot more information about how the resolution process works for New York State School Board Association and wanted to make sure that we're representing, we're being represented in this process. So what happens each year is that school, school districts and BOSI's units across the state can have suggestions for resolutions, things that they feel New York State School Board Association should advocate for on behalf of school districts across the state. They put forward these proposed resolutions with a rationale. There's a resolutions committee for New York State School Board Association that reviews all those proposed resolutions and then kind of decides as they're looking at them whether they feel it is something that New York State School Board Association should support that resolution. They oppose it and are not going to make that an advocacy stance. So it come, kind of, they come forward that way. So where are their recommendations? And then like Westchester Putnam School Board Association, their advocacy group, I was at that meeting, had another opportunity to look at, okay, well, what did New York State School Board Association say their thoughts were on these various resolutions for advocacy? And for our Westchester Putnam area, where do our school, you know, what do we, do we feel that we're in agreement with those or not? So it would be a long process to go through each individual one, and sort of the way we had done it for the Westchester Putnam and then the way for the school district, and that's why I sent them out ahead of time, is really if anybody, we have a couple that for Westchester Putnam, there was disagreement among the people talking, whether they felt it was something that would be representative for our area in terms of advocacy. So those are ones that I would definitely like to have us decide if I, when I go to the business meeting, would we support that resolution? Would we oppose that resolution? Or do we feel it's not something that we want to weigh in on and abstain from our, our vote for that one? And again, all these resolutions, it's not something that's going to necessarily happen, but it's things that, that NISBA is going to advocate for over the next few years. There's some sunsetting resolutions that they've already been advocating for, for a few years, and now we're just kind of renewing that. Will we, will they continue to work on that? So basically, we'll just go through the ones on the chart that had an ND next to them, which meant from a Westchester Putnam, there wasn't, wasn't a decision on how we felt would be represented. And then if there's anything that somebody disagreed with the recommendations that are on here, we could discuss that if Somers wants to, wants to either support or oppose differently. So the first one was resolution number one, NISBA support adding fully, they, the district was asking that NISBA support adding fully state-funded arts and music education as a common school branch that should be incorporated into public school curriculum to provide more well-rounded education for children. And that had been proposed by Duchess Boses. Part of the art, the discussion about that had been that while lots of districts fully support arts education, and most of us in Westchester Putnam do have that, the discussion focused on the trade-off between, you know, part of it is when you're starting to have it be fully funded by the state and sort of a mandatory program, then you're asking, asking for a kind of legislation that's, that's mandating curriculum. And often, school districts want to have some freedom on that and not have a mandated curriculum. So the challenge was weighing that versus the, the positives of it being required to guarantee that all students in all schools will have a uniform experience and an opportunity to experience arts education.
Did that, did this resolution suggest any funding mechanism?
Well, it'd be coming from the state. So, so, well, it's, it's advocating for, that would mean NISBA's asking the state to fund it.
Sometimes the resolution that NISBA proposed, for example, if Microsoft's willing to donate the pad or whatever, computer to a school or so on, they made a deal, they make a resolution then for state to accept them and so on. These unfunded resolution go to the state usually, you know, peters out.
We end up with the district locally.
Right. So that's why what they're asking NISBA to advocate for is that the state fund arts education for every school district. So as a, as a board, I guess individually, would you, do you want us to support that or oppose that or?
Do you want us to be a little, in favor or opposed of staying?
Yeah. So why don't we say, out of board trustees, are you, would you like to support?
Without my constitution's input, I don't know. That's money to us, right? We have to pay for the instrument. If you have a fully funded music program.
So I think a different question might be.
There's a lot of, a lot of costs there.
I think a different question might be that, do we already have a robust arts and music program locally?
Right.
And if so, do we need to engage in this conversation because we might just abstain?
Exactly.
Right. Yes.
I would, I would say that I think abstaining might be.
It's risky to get yourself through a.
Good situation here.
The decision, the decision is for all schools in the state to have mandated arts education.
Yes. So are we happy with things the way they are now? And is it to our benefit to have it the way it is?
Yeah, maybe we can ask Ray one question. How much cost us in our music program right now?
Financially?
Yeah.
Off the top of your head.
I honestly, I would have to go look at that, but I would say that from K through 12, we have a very strong, rich music program.
But that's funded not from the state.
That's funded locally, correct.
Locally. So if we supported this, we would be asking for state funding for our music and arts program.
So if it was mandated, then we would receive funding, but also there would be likely a curriculum mandated alongside it, which would then change our ability to effectively create whatever music program.
We could, we could gauge whether the state would be supporting it or not.
I would just say we're in a very, very good place right now, and I don't know if I would necessarily.
Want the state to say you have to change something?
Yep.
All in favor?
Okay.
All in favor.
To abstain.
Abstaining from it?
Well, no, if you're in favor of opposing.
Oh, all in favor of supporting this?
Opposed, right?
Abstain.
Or abstain?
Yeah.
We have, we recently.
It's not really.
Good program ourselves.
Do you want to just do the same for the next one, which I've.
There we go.
Yeah. So the next one was.
16, the school board.
Yeah. So the other one that was not decided was New York State School Board Association supports legislation at the state level that would allow for school board members to receive a stipend for their work as a trustee.
No.
So this was, came from Beacon.
Absolutely, no.
Okay. So we want to say no, just to know the rationale behind it had been that there may be people that would like to participate in a school board but don't have the time to volunteer and can only give that time if they were paid. That was why they put it forward, but I'm totally comfortable with. So can you say the vote the way you did the vote?
In favor of this initiative?
Mm-hmm.
Opposed of this initiative?
Opposed.
Abstained? Well done. Thank you.
We do not want to.
Money is involved, more corruption.
That's one. It doesn't mean we don't get cookies.
Okay. So we're opposing and.
As long as you're buying them, Chad.
Water, cookies. Okay. So the, the next one is NISBA support legislation at the state and or federal level that would reform the current gun laws to strengthen background checks, implementing red flag laws as well as laws that will restrict guns from those under the age of 21. So this was put forward by the Plainview, Bell Page School Board, and some of the challenges in deciding is that.
Appropriate for school board advocacy.
Yeah, is it appropriate for school board advocacy or not? So I'll let you do the question.
Didn't the state already did, done something this?
Isn't there statewide legislation that's not related to the school board?
No, no. The state has a gun resolutions already passed, right?
Yes, this is asking for some of that to be reformed, to be strengthened, to be strengthened.
What's the difference?
So as a school board, do we feel that we, that NISBA should be advocating for this?
Whether the school board or whether our town board perhaps.
In addition to whatever state already done.
Correct.
Right. Yeah, this gets into very. Yes. I feel like, I don't feel like that's our position to be.
Everybody feel confident to vote?
I would.
In favor?
I'm ready to vote.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstained?
Okay. All right. Carry on. Okay. And were there, and that was it? Were there any other items that anybody wanted to question the decisions that were on the worksheet?
Thank you for representing us.
You're welcome.
I mean, do you have any controversial ones?
No. And I had the opportunity to kind of talk through them before. So I was comfortable, yeah, I was comfortable with these recommendations for Somers.
Thanks for sharing all of that, Heidi.
Including 33 to 38, comfortable?
Those are recommended to not, those are to not be adopted. Yeah. So those are all Os, meaning.
Everybody voted out.
Those were all.
Parents, parent children, school board are comfortable.
Those are indicated there too. Those are, those are recommendations that NISBA not support those resolutions.
Okay. We're not actually a question and answer. This is a board discussion. So trustee, I would ask trustees.
Can you, can you clarify? Maybe just clarify on the form. There's an O next to some of those.
Sure. So those ones at the bottom, these are resolutions that are proposed, proposed resolutions that are not recommended for adoption at the end there. Did anybody have any concerns or questions about opposing those resolutions?
Or would anybody like to vote in favor of those resolutions?
Yes. Does anybody want to support one of those?
No. I, I agree that those resolutions, we would not want NISBA supporting them.
Or mandating that we.
NISBA's supposed to support us, so.
And again, it may not, it may not be that some of these things would be a bad thing in practice. It's just, should New York State School Board Association be advocating for these particular items?
And what does that do to our local autonomy?
Some of it may be apparent.
If it's mandated, correct.
Yes, exactly.
I don't like that.
You know, that's what.
Okay. Any questions or concerns on those?
No.
Again, thank you for representing us.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Do you want to talk through the hybrid meeting?
Uh, yes.
We were going to have a conversation about the NISBA hybrid meeting announcement. So you all have under the, I think, public content that virtual board meetings are no longer permitted unless we would like to pass our own resolution.
Resolution.
Which I believe we have in the past had the ability for folks to be virtually joining us. And so we can do that. I would like to be.
We can, yeah. Yeah, I read through that. I think it made sense, but we still have to have quorum in person.
Sure. And there's also an announcement ahead of time.
There seemed to be some good stipulations in there.
The difference is that, like, right now, the way it works for a board member to be able to join a meeting remotely, now that we've, now that the quarantine stuff is over in terms of public meetings. Now, in order to do it, if a board member wants to participate in a meeting remotely, it needs to be, it has to be published in advance with a meeting notice, and the address of where that board, where that board member is viewing from must be open to public to join them.
Which has always been the case.
So you have to post that address. That has always been the case. However, what they're, what we can do if we pass a resolution to do so is that, should a trustee know that they have an issue with childcare? They know that they are on quarantine and can't come in that day? They're recovering from surgery and they can't make it to the meeting. If they would like to be, they're traveling and they would like to be able to be an active participant in the meeting, they would be able to join the meeting on Zoom, and their address would not have to be accessible to the public as long as the, a quorum of board members are physically present. So if you have four trustees here, one trustee could be in Rome zooming in from, you know, So if you have four trustees here, one trustee could be in Rome zooming in from, you know, a hotel, and they don't have to provide that address.
I thought that is clearly stated that way.
We can't right now. Right now, you'd have to give the address of where you are in a public place.
You only need one place that has quorum.
Sure, but the person who's calling in.
As long as you have one place has quorum, that's open to public, that's considered public meeting.
Yes, but somebody can't be a voting member participating remotely.
And count towards quorum.
So if you were sick and you were.
If we pass a resolution, then they can.
Yes.
So the question is, do we want to pass a resolution?
So we just pass that resolution?
Any other questions or can we vote on this?
Well, we have to get, we have to get it from legal, and it has to have a public hearing.
And then there was one other, um, if we were to do that, I think we also have to have, public would have to have access to Zoom in and participate in the meeting if we have a board member also.
Well, that's, that would be the burden on the quorum meeting. The quorum meeting has to provide that facility.
Yeah. So what we.
So there are some other elements that we will want to get specific direction from council, so that if that's what you want, then we can kind of move towards that.
Are we interested in council giving us some advisory policy?
And also technically, for the school district, also the study that you're.
Yes.
Let's postpone to a next meeting.
Way more, that's fine. Nikki said yes.
No, I'd like to floor it, I think it'd be a nice option.
Chad? Policy? Bringing back from council? Yeah?
Yeah, 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 I want to explore.
Yeah, I would like, yeah, so I'd like to see, yeah, have council give us a write-up of it, and then we can look at exactly what it entails and have a public hearing. We have to have a public hearing, I believe Nancy had said.
Yes.
So we'd have to present it at a board meeting. There'd be, what, is it, um, just public has to be able to comment on it? And then we decide if we want to, yeah.
Yeah, and there's one particular notice in there that we're trying to get clarity on. Seems counterintuitive to me, but it has to be given with four days of notice of these extraneous circumstances. So, and all practical person purposes, that, that doesn't really help, and so.
If it's a last-minute issue.
It did mention some exceptions.
And what's that, even without exception?
I don't think, and actually, it doesn't work for travel.
Camping person.
It was childcare and illness. So like, if you knew you were having surgery, and you knew you weren't going to be able to come to the meeting that week, but you wanted to be able to join and vote via Zoom, it would allow you to do that.
Yeah, so, so that's, again, it's a conversation a little bit more, so.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Want to do it in Yosemite Park?
Yes, we have to see exactly what it looks like when legal sends it to us.
Yep.
You're good?
Yeah.
All right. So it looks like, board, we've arrived at the next public comment. So now, any members of the community who are here that would like to give us a public comment about any item, members wishing to speak should speak, should first be recognized by the president. Identify themselves, please state your name clearly so we can get back in touch with you and we can connect with you. Or any organization that you're representing, please state that clearly as well, and the topic that you wish to discuss. Comments should be kept as brief as possible, our policy states three minutes. And relate to school matters, and again, speakers should refrain from discussing personnel or individual student matters when sharing their comments. Again, this is a comment, this is not a question and answer session, and any written statements shall be given to the district clerk, who's being played by Chris in the front row. Go ahead, please.
I have one graduating student last year, okay? I have three still coming through the school. I've come on and off to these meetings, and I, I just want to say, I've heard questions from the families, the parents of the children. We entrust to you, we entrust our children to you, and we have legitimate questions. And all we ask is that we get answers. And I understand you say meet us privately, or we'll write you a note, but all of us are here to hear those answers. We wish you would allow some time to respond, to give us your honest opinion, because we do trust what you do, or we're trying to trust what you do. And when you say meet us in pub, uh, in private, it almost is counterintuitive that you don't have an answer for the question. So I don't know how you can work it in somehow that we can get answers and we can understand your logic behind decisions you make. Because after all, in a classroom, if a student has a question, the teacher doesn't say, come see me after class, because other people can learn, other students can learn from those questions and those answers. And that's all that we want. So when we shut down speakers, it really puts a bad taste in our mouth as parents, and we really want what's best for our kids, and we're hoping that's what you want as well. So please, don't say, come meet us in private, or we'll send you a letter, or how are you going to answer these questions? I heard some really good questions, but I've heard no answers. How can we get those answers? And how can you get them out to the public and not just the one individual? Because maybe I have the same answer or same question that five other people here have. And we, we really need your support, because you want our support, we need your support too. And I apologized before for letting that lady take my time, but she has legitimate questions, and when you shut people down, you build mistrust. And we don't need that in our community, because it's just going to divide us more and more. And I came, I was, I went to Somers schools. I came back here, in fact, my seventh grade teacher, Mr. Winicky, I loved him, and I became a social studies teacher because of my teachers. And now I'm not so sure that this was my best decision moving back to Somers, because we're not getting that feeling. I'm not getting that feeling as a parent. So I, I'm sorry, you know, for the disruption before, but please answer our questions, and don't do it in private, do it in public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. There was some, everything that you said, I mean, I, I agree with, as a mom, for sure. As a community member, as a taxpayer, for certain. When you said to give an honest opinion and, and that you want to trust what we're doing, this public comment is not really for the board members to give their honest opinion, and I, I'm struggling, because I'm not really sure how else to share, that, that the board is only able to approve the folks that come to us. If you wanted to have an offline conversation, that's not so helpful, and I, and we hear, but hang on, let me finish, I'm so sorry. This is not supposed to be a Q and A, and I'm already going to get myself in trouble. For sure, thank you, I know I'm getting myself in trouble, Ray. You say that you don't want to meet us in private because it's counterintuitive. All I can offer you is what's available, right? And, and the way that the board and all of the boards. So it sounds, it sounds to me like there, there is an interest in having a community conversation, and that's great and fine and good. It is not the board's responsibility to create that. Dr. Blanch, I would ask you if there's a possibility for us to have, you know, an open conversation, because there seems to be quite a bit of.
So certainly, as I think I mentioned before, if I didn't, my apologies, but the committee that has been together for, I think, the last five years was SEET. They have their annual kind of first meeting next week, and so we have, um, I think we're close to fifty-five, sixty members that are on that committee. So one of those kind of structures in that committee is to look at educating our faculty, our administration, our community, our families. So that would be certainly something we will ask that team to look at, and saying, what opportunities could we provide through the SEET committee to educate the community about those parts? So whatever those questions may be, we can look at that and have that conversation. So those are parts where we would have folks that are in there and having that work, so.
So the opportunity for a real Q and A with the community.
That group may say, hey, let's, let's coordinate such an event.
And not four o'clock in the evening.
So again, the four o'clock in the evening, I want to be very clear, that is a committee meeting that was established last June for those committee members. It's not a Q and A, just like the Tuskegee University that we did last year, specific to this topic, DEI, was held in this very room that the learning office put on, that was at seven o'clock at night. So that's very different. That committee meeting is intended for the children to be there at the high school, and for the committee members who are committed, and they know that that's the time that they can come. That is not what that is. Tuskegee University is probably the most direct example of that. Last year, there was a Q and A kind of session that Kevin and Claire, members of the team, pulled together and had a conversation with the community about diversity, equity, and inclusion in, in this library. So is that a part that we want to learn from our community members? Say, look, we're hearing this, this is what we're experiencing, let's create an opportunity to have kind of a forum like that that would be created.
Great, and the other thing that I'm just thinking is, because it seems like a lot of the questions are related to one particular personnel, and we are, we cannot discuss personnel matters publicly, just like when we had the bus driver incident.
Certainly.
We couldn't specifically talk about that individual employee's record or pro, like, that has to be done in executive session. The Board of Ed cannot participate in those conversations in public.
And that's where.
That's why we can't set up a question and answer session specifically about an individual. But the district has provided a number of them about diversity, equity, and inclusion, the position they've had, you know, and it sounds like SEET will be setting up what we need for this year. So it's great that we've had this feedback, that we'll be going into SEET as they're looking to plan, what does the community need this year?
Is the SEET committee meeting, is it public or no?
So those, those meetings are not public meetings, those are folks who are, if they're on that committee, which again, I mentioned before, two folks, I would say, look, I will join, I'd like to be a part of that. So if folks come, it's a conversation with the public, but it's, it's not an open meeting, so that's, that's not a piece of it. It's a, it's a committee meeting that is run out of learning office, and, and so it's not a meeting held by the board anymore than a meeting if I have the administrative team or a teacher team of teachers that are developing these, those are not open meetings.
Um, earlier you had mentioned about the, um, the DEI coordinator talking about, you know, talking to some of the community and just trying to figure out the, the right approach for our town. Has that been scheduled yet, or when is that?
Um, it's, it's ongoing. She met just with SEPTA, not many of our families that were there. She's had a number of folks reach out to her directly to have conversations. Some of the most recent ones have been conversations with myself today. Couple of, so it's been going on pretty much for, for since she's, she's landed on board, and it will continue.
Is she going to the PTA meetings?
She will go to PTA meetings, she was in today with staff meetings as well and stuff, so it's a matter of when that fits into the calendar. I'm, I'm asking PTAs, just give me some time right now. And so I've commandeering some of their time, like I said, last week, they had a spot, I asked if I could take that spot. So I'm also going through with the PTA meeting, having conversation, but yes, she will do that. She started with SEPTA. I'm following with SEPTA, actually tomorrow night, with them, so.
With, with them or with her as well?
With SEPTA, she already met with that entirety group, I think for a good ninety minutes, if not longer, last week about things.
Got it, I'm not sure how the PTA meetings set up, are they set up with Q and A, or are people able to ask questions?
So typically, that's what the PTA is looking for, and so if that's what, that session last week was basically what that was, was here, help me understand about how we're getting to it, and then the PTA was Q and A back and forth, and to take in about what's the best way we can support our schools in that regard. So yes, those would be kind of that opportunity. And again, as we think forward about, yes, she'll be embracing it, it's again, not quite sixty days she's been here, so yes, she has more to meet, but she started.
So SEPTA's been the only one that's been done. So there's the other PTAs within the school, so parents want to go and, and get a little bit more detail. They could attend their school's PTA sessions where she'll be attending.
And that's the schedule that I don't have at the hand here.
Don't have it handy right now, that's fine, but it's something.
Just to be clear, SEPTA invited her to come to a coffee, an informal coffee and conversation that we've had, that, that SEPTA holds on a monthly basis, and that's when she had arrived for it. So it wasn't even a formal PTA meeting per se. And I know the meeting tomorrow night has nothing to do with DEI for SEPTA, it's about the vision and goals of, of the school districts.
Got it, so the other PTA leaders could reach out to her and invite her to the sessions as well to.
And then they would mark it that the session is going to be inclusive of this topic, so people in the community would know, and that way we'd get the community to, to be aware that it's happening in a public place, is that right?
Oh, yes, and that's where, again, I think you remember when Susan was here last week, also closed out with like, here's my direct email and conversation, and some folks have reached out to her and had conversations as, right after, actually, that night, my understanding, she got a few emails that night and said, can we have a conversation? So she started doing that right away, too.
Got it.
Basically, the board has to operate under the school law. We basically follow the law. It's not that we don't want to answer questions. We can have different format. We can have seminars, we can invite speakers, we can have, you know, different workshops, so on, on, on whatever topic that community is interested. I, I don't think we can direct to a particular personnel or anything that, uh, to deal with in the public, that's all. It's very simple. It's not really answer, not answering at all.
Yeah. Please, if you have additional questions, please come up to the podium, share your name so we can be in touch with you.
No.
If you'd like to, no, no, it's okay, Efe.
Have a whole conversation.
Efe, it's okay, it's okay. Please, if you'd like to come to the podium, please, come on up.
It's our board policy.
It's the policy of a board of education. It's a board of education policy through the New York State Board of Ed. Okay.
Do you want to just step up to, step up to the podium, please?
Come on up.
If you're here for, if you're here for a comment, please step up to the podium. We need to maintain order, I'm sorry.
S-H-A-J. Is there any more public comment?
If there's, if there's no more public comment where people are coming to the podium to speak, then we'll move to board comments.
We got somebody else.
There we go.
Yeah, that's right. Speak in the public.
Yeah. Please speak into the mic, let us know your name, please.
Sorry, sorry if I reiterate a, a lot of what was said this evening. I came in after the first comment section. My name is Paul Chivardini. I'm a, uh, I was raised in Somers. I attended SIS, SMS, graduate of Somers High School. My wife and I had children, like many other people who said they'd never come back to Somers, we came back to Somers. It was a great move. The feelings we have for protecting our children are very intense. In fact, I struggle to think about something I'm more willing to fight for, other than their health, both physical and mental. This is why it brings me great anxiety to have to think about the recent hire as DEI leader. About a year and a half ago, when CRT was a hot and divisive topic throughout the country, the Board of Education meetings began to garner a lot of attention. And understandably so, parents were concerned about the indoctrination of their children. Since then, CRT has become more divisive, has become more divisive, and many states and jurisdictions have now banned CRT or DEI outright, or are in the process of limiting the scope of how it is taught. The number of districts in this country are growing, not shrinking, and it's not just white folks who are concerned. When this community first voiced their concern, it was quite an uproar. We were told that DEI was not about teaching with racial undertones. The outline of the program was ambiguous. It was a program that would ensure equitable experiences for all students, with an emphasis on bullying and subsequent consequences that would ensue. The message to concerned parents was that the DEI program was not going to teach our children about racism, reading books that will rewrite US history or be asked to emancipate their whiteness. And most important, the district would do everything it can to be transparent on the subject. Transparency was a word that we heard so frequently since those, at those initial meetings. It was used to give us comfort that nothing would be done in secret. It's incredible to think that with such a high level of transparency, that the district would somehow move from writing a new code of ethics on inclusion and the ramifications for bullying, to hiring an activist whose work is centered around racial emancipation. We have somehow willingly hired a person who has co-authored a book that spews hatred towards whites and will have input to our children who will ingest this content. Where was all the transparency? Maybe I missed all the transparency from you, Dr. Blanch, because I was too busy being a father, working and providing for my family, coaching sports in the community, worrying about how to get my kids to and from practice, school, find extra time for math help or to the ball field while trying to figure out how we could somehow squeeze an extra hour as a family to go to church. So maybe I missed it, and I'm running on the same treadmill of life that nearly everybody in this town is running on. Nearly everyone I asked about this had no idea about the decisions that were made and the consequences. So there is a communication issue, and I believe it was done purposefully, because this is a community that loves its kids, a community that is willing to run through walls for their families, and the decision to hire a radical person is not aligned with the majority of good, honest people in this town. As a community, we are trying to do everything we can to enhance our kids' lives and help them become good human beings. The decision is not aligned with our community, and your communication was not enough for a topic like this. In retrospect, I feel we were lied to. We were lied to believe that the idea we were all so concerned with would never germinate into the thing that we are ultimately feared would be injected into our children's minds. I choose not to teach my children self-doubt or feel guilt. What I choose to teach my kid is kindness, resilience, confidence, and to love their country. And so do, as do my friends of color. The rhetoric and hate that the new DEI leader has penned has no place in a town like this. People like her have a fantastic ability to inject racism and poisonous views into everyday life. Adding her work to our district is akin to a chemical company dumping poisons and dyes into our reservoirs. In the spirit of transparency, I have a list of questions I'd like to read to you. Perhaps we can over-communicate these answers. Who's in charge of the hire? Was it a group or was it one person? Did anyone diligence her work? If we didn't, what would be the process be to remove this person if she is not the human fabric that the town of Somers wants promoting their, her views to our children? What are the goals of this person? I'm not interested in a long-winded circular description. I'd like to know how you will measure her success. How will this community know if this program is successful, and what happens if it's not? How will we know if this person's fingerprints is, are on the content that our kids are consuming in the classroom? What will the recourse be if the program is not successful? In closing, I fear I, I know the answers to most of these questions. Pacify, pacify us, tell us what we want to hear, and take action on your agenda. My hope is that the concern from the people here tonight, and the multiples, multiples more, who cannot make it, will start to drive real answers with recourse. My thoughts tonight are focused on the dangerous ideology that one person speaks in her co-authored work for the world to see. And I don't want that person's poisonous thoughts near or around my children. Thank you.
Cheverdini? Thank you, Mr. Cheverdini. Um, I just want to say that the, the same values that you espouse of kindness, resilience, confidence, and love of your country are the very values that our board shares and that our district values. Uh, and any feelings of non-transparency, I, I mean, I can't speak to it besides saying, we've answered the questions of who's in charge of the hire, the group or the person. We've shared the goals of the person, we've shared how the, the, the success of this person will be measured. The school has been quite open and transparent about how the success will be measured, how the program will be measured. And just as every other teacher, or aide, or lunch monitor, or administrator has an evaluation, right, aligned to a rubric, so too will any new hire that comes to this district. So that is not new, and that also is not within the purview of the Board of Education. So I feel that we've gone above and beyond in answering all of those questions. If it's unclear, I, I'll keep trying. Again, I know we're not supposed to engage in, in question and answer, but I want to do, be respectful, I hope that's acceptable. So if we have additional questions, are there additional public comments that people would like to make? If you do, please go up to the podium and state your name clearly for the record, thank you.
Tina Barisha Palusha, and just in case you guys didn't read, and I'm going to, I have an excerpt from her book. "Subsequently, when we issue a colonizing license that permits whiteness to function as a subversive influence on how we talk about, think about, and do the work of teaching and learning, in a word, if enslaves us in order to cultivate the conditions for our classrooms that emancipate our classrooms from whiteness and to deconstruct whiteness." classrooms that emancipate our classrooms from whiteness and to deconstruct whiteness as an everyday intentionality that enters into our classrooms with us, we must, yes, we must, exclamation, deliberately and stridently reject any reduction of whiteness solely to Confederate flags, racist epithets, cross burnings, bloody lynching, MAGA hats, congressional insurrections, and/or any other sensational forms of whiteness being white." Susan Gonzoits. "When we do, we avert the seemingly innocent demonstrations of whiteness in our hallways, classrooms, gymnasiums, playgrounds, and cafeterias, providing a moral cover of the spirit murdering." That's Susan Gonzoits. That's who you people voted in? That's who Dr. Blanch hired for our children, our, our white children? Have any of you read this book? I know, I know excerpts, excerpts has been sent, have been sent to you.
Talking about somebody by name. Sorry? I mean, we're not supposed to be talking about individual persons.
No, you're not supposed to be talking about a racist you guys voted in? Are you kidding? No?
Public sessions, unfortunately, we are not allowed to identify a person by name, and we are not allowed to engage in discourse specifically around people whose names are being used.
It is our policy.
It is, yeah, I mean, it's our policy, but it's also.
Policy that we create. Policy voted up by the board, it's not a law, there's no statute.
Board, if you would like to have a conversation about changing our policy at a future meeting, we can talk about it, we can go through the same process, but for right now.
Your legal counsel would absolutely suggest you do not speak about personal matters in public. They will absolutely tell you that is not something that this board, any board should be doing.
We would be opening ourselves to serious problems.
And they would open us up to very expensive legal issues which would come.
Again, board, you are jeopardizing any conversation in public about a particular employee or person. You are putting the district, this district, at potential liabilities. So again, that's not from myself, that's directly from your legal counsel.
All right, so if anybody else would like to come and make a public comment, please come and do so. There we go.
TJ, once again, TJ McCormick, I want to express my gratitude for the respect shown by the people who chose to look up and listen and pay attention to the people who were speaking last few minutes. I'm very, very grateful for that. That's honorable. Good for you.
So if there are no other public comments?
I won't say the people who promoted the D E I. My son loves it.
All right, folks, so we're, thank you for, for board member comments. Trustees, have you any comments about what was presented this evening? The success plans, the district polls?
No pressure. No, I mean, geez, I'm gonna start. I love our town, I love our community, I know we all do. And that's why we're here. We're here for our kids. We care, okay? We, as a board, you know, our, our role is of oversight, and so we, we do, we, we can see what job descriptions are, and, and we can ask Dr. Blanch and, you know, we, it's for us to make sure that what's good, what's good, gets done in school meets our standards of what we, you know, have determined as our community as, is what we value. And, and it's all with the intent, making our kids, you know, teaching them how to think. I don't think there's anyone in the administration and in our educators that are out there to teach our kids what to think. That is not what we value. And, and when we hear about all these great programs, when we hear about the research behind them, when we hear about the goals to reach, that, I mean, and, you know, the IB profile, that's what it's all about. And that's what's really exciting about us here in Somers. And I'm, I'm very proud of that, and I will continue to be proud of that. There are, we all are going to have a diversity of views, no question about it. Many I'll agree with, many I won't agree with. But as educators, as a school district, what I view is, is not bringing those personal views in to teach, you know, our students that they need to agree with that, no. What I, what my view is, and what I think the school district's view is, is to come in and they, they're teaching kids how to think, how to be constructive listeners and critical thinkers. And, and that's, that's what we're all about. I hear, I do want to also say, I mean, one of our primary roles, what I view is one of my primary roles on the board is, is to listen. So when we get emails, when people come and talk, you know, I hear you. I can't speak for the other board members, but I know from all our conversations, we all hear, okay? We all listen. And it is important. It matters, it's important to hear from you. And sometimes it can highlight communication that needs to be clarified. It can highlight, heck, maybe sometimes we miss something, you know? But it's important for us to think, to listen, think critically, and, and I think that's what we take seriously in our, in our role. It's not always easy, but we're not, we're not here to volunteer, to just do easy things and just sitting up here, and that's not what we're doing. So thank you for coming out, thank you for sharing, and I, and I encourage all of us to continue to be good listeners, critical thinkers, and, and, you know, that's how we all learn and get better. Let's all continue to do, thank you.
So first, I'll start off with the, you know, curriculum and the department and schools overhead, overviews, right, of your goals and everything you did. It was refreshing seeing all the metrics come in, seeing your thought process behind it, how you've been evaluating, you know, the data and coming up with, great, here's how we need to change, and here's how we need to adapt, to grow and improve our, you know, reading, mathematics, and such. That is great to see. I look forward to see the continued updates throughout the year, you know, and where we end up. I'd love to see the cross-school collaboration that you guys have going on as far as trying to get the, the assessments and the standards. So I think that's all great, and thank you very much for everybody sharing that there. The, you know, as far as the, the community comments, again, not to talk about it individual, you know, like, I, I also share, you know, concerns with our ability to be able to stick to what our defined job description is. I look forward to hearing a little bit more and learning more about, you know, how we're gonna ensure that, that we're able to stick to those guidelines, stick to what we have, we commit and we review with the public in the seat committee meetings to make sure we don't deviate that, right? We don't deviate from that, and nothing's getting, you know, injected in of, you know, personal views, personal, you know, political views, or whatever it might be, should not be coming into, you know, the classroom in any way. So I, as, in addition to the rest of, you know, people that presented here or talked tonight, I'm curious to learn more about that.
Yeah, actually, as you hear people speak, your mind starts to go. So this is my sixth year on the board, my final year, so if anybody wants to run, I'm letting you know now, I do want to talk to people about what it means to be on the board. Since I've been here, I think the school district has engaged us in really some tough conversations. We've asked questions, we've asked for transparency, and I feel they've honored us every single time. When we've asked for data, we're like, more data. And I feel you've always risen up to that challenge. I think everything we heard tonight was about inclusion. I think when you think about embedded honors, you think about attendance, making kids want to come to school. I mean, my kids have graduated and moved on. I mean, I came, what, 13 years ago, whatever, from, for my daughter in kindergarten, now she's gonna be a senior in college. So are there gripes that I've had? Of course, but I think over my six years being on the board, I've seen that we're making strides towards inclusivity. How do we, how do we bring more kids to school and feel good about being in school? Trying not to get emotional when I speak about this, but I think there's work to be done. But I think for us to keep working towards making kids feel like they belong here in some fashion, in a class, in an honors class, coming to class, coming to clubs, I think we're working towards that. And I think it's, it's hard work, and let's embrace the grittiness of the hard work is why I'm here, I think. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to speak?
Nobody wants to bow.
Okay, I'll, I'll say something, since I've been on the board for 15 years. This board, although it's elected to board, is very different from your other politicians. We don't draw salary, as you see, we just vote it out, right? We don't take salary. And we can be voted out. If you don't like us, that's fine. And you just have to examine the board's purpose. The board's purpose is for education, for the kids. All these social issues, there are tons of them. It's not just Somers. Every town, the whole country. Every newspaper you open up, all issues. If you expect these non-salary seven people to solve those kind of problems on an individual basis, one at a time, it's impossible. See? You can choose to walk out. Somebody can just say, I don't want to hear. We cannot do things on individual basis. We are a collective board for this town of Somers, for all the students. That's why the inclusivity is important. We talk about, everybody has to learn to be a good citizen. On this issue, I have my opinion. In fact, if I have a cup, a couple of coffee with somebody, with you, you might think I'm your buddy. But I have to keep that to myself as a board member. I cannot just speak up and talk about any individual, their past belief, a book written some time ago. You don't think people change? A lot of people changes. People write a book this year, next year runs for another position. That's politician, right? We are talking about education here. We're talking about really honest, teaching kids truths, false, not get into these kind of, I call them very shady areas. We can't, honestly, okay? We cannot. I tell you, if any parents can say, I can teach my kids to be a perfect person, you tell me. I, I will, I will go to learn from you. It's not possible. So all we hear really is hope that we have a good, harmonious community, not be influenced by headlines, mass media, outside influence. We want us, this school, to be the best we can build. I'm here, I push that button all the time. I ask those kind of tough questions. I want the school to show me they can teach our kids to be better. I cannot solve every individual issues in the world, okay? That's my personal comment. If you think I'm out of line, you can vote me out. That's, that's simple, okay? If you think I am doing my job, then you give me a vote. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Guess I'll go.
You don't have to.
Well, I was gonna throw in something about C WAC as well, so. I'm the newbie here, I'm sure everyone knows that. I, you know, I take, I've listened tonight, and I, I like to take everybody's perspectives into account, and I look forward to hearing more about how the seat meeting goes next week and how the process gets implemented. And again, sticking to that job description and, and, you know, what we put out there, and that's what our role is as a board, to make sure that everyone's keeping to the policies that are administered by our board. But I'm also so excited to hear from all of the principals and vice principals tonight. It sounds like a lot of really good work with the science of reading, the executive functioning skills, or whatever you would like to call it, in order to be in the parameters of what we need. And WIN, I was really excited to hear about how you learned from last year, it seems, of how WIN has been implemented and making improvements of, of setting it up as like a home base on Monday and the content literacy on Tuesday, and then Wednesday, Thursday enrichment, and Friday supports. I think that's all so very important, and it sounds like we're getting more data to go through the districts, just like we've tried to do continuous language from K through 12. It sounds like we're also looking at continuous data, K through 12, in a lot of ways, with the DIBELS and bringing over those up. And the other thing I was just gonna comment on, I guess it's off-topic of this evening, but we did have our first C WAC meeting of the year last week.
Could you tell us what the acronym is for, Amanda?
I'm so sorry, yes, it's the, I'm guilty of this now, too. The, it's the Social Emotional Wellness Advisory Committee. I, myself, I know Chad's also a, a member of the board who sits on it with me. And we had our first meeting, I think, I guess it was the 28th, I don't know, the weeks have kind of all blurred at this point. We went over some of the general results from the middle schools' co-vitality survey, and I know that Phil Kavanaugh spoke at the back-to-school nights as well about those, and I look forward to the wellness seminar that's gonna be coming up with the Tusker U presentation in the evening. I guess it's in November. And I'm sure we're gonna hear more of an update next week at our next week's meeting for, that's, I know the social emotional wellness is also on the agenda for that. And, yeah, it sounds like good work, because there was a lot of surprises in the, in the survey, I feel like, of how we looked at it. We did an exercise of how we looked at what we thought the results could be and like what the actual results were. And it was an interesting kind of exercise to see as, like, how we thought of it as adults, and then what actually were the results from the survey, so.
Hey, I'm, I'm kind of excited by the meeting tonight, actually. It was great to hear the reports from the schools. It's always good to hear, you know, and just that appreciation of the work that you do, when we just see that one example of one goal, and all the time and effort that goes into that, and all that intentionality in what do we, what's our reality, where do we need to be, how are we gonna get there, how are we gonna monitor it, what are our expectations? So huge thank you for doing that work, you know, so diligently, and taking the time to share that, that process with us. And I'm really, really looking forward to the chance of, you know, as we try to keep, get familiar again with what's going on in the schools, we get to, some of us get to go visit at the high school tomorrow, and then I know some of us will be at Primrose, I think, on Friday also. I'm gonna miss Primrose, but I'll be at the high school tomorrow, so I'm looking forward to that. Miss it. And, and then, you know, it was good to have public here tonight. You know, sometimes it's, it's difficult to hear when people aren't happy. And I know it can be really, you know, one thing to remember is that Board of Ed meetings, these are meetings for the board to conduct the business of the district. And so for us, that's learning about what's going on, the particular areas that we need to be responsible for oversight within the schools. And then, you know, sometimes it's voting on contracts, and sometimes it's voting on policies, and, you know, there's all the different business things that we have to work on in the budget and all that as it goes through. And as, you know, and that, you know, similar to experience when I've gone to town board meetings, they have public comment. And I know how frustrating it can be when you have something that you wanna hear, and you just go up and you say your thing, and then nobody can talk back to you, and you don't get any resolution. But that's just, it is, open meetings like this for town and school are set up with, and we don't, you don't have to have public comment, but traditionally, most boards do. But that's just what it is, is a chance for the public to comment, and then the board can take that information and do whatever research we need to do, do whatever follow-up we need to do. Lindsay, one thing I'm thinking we may want to come back to is, we had gotten in the habit of having a sign, and she sort of at the podium, so that we could get full names and some contact info, an email address at least, so that it allows us to follow up afterwards.
I think Nancy just wasn't here with us today.
Yeah, so we don't, don't have that. I think we'd had it, but we, and we haven't had really public at the meetings making comments recently, so we hadn't, but maybe we'll make sure that we have that in the future. But if you made a comment and you wanted follow-up, make sure to reach out by email so that we have your contact information to get back to, I would say. But also to know, like, you know, hearing your comments, but realizing that the process is working. We had received emails, we knew that there were concerns, we had an opportunity during executive session to talk about what we had heard, what those concerns were, get educated on, on a process, and, and so that we felt that And so that we felt that as a board, you know, we knew what we needed to do and understood how a process worked. So it's an example of it working. And then we've heard more concerns, and you've had that opportunity to share those. So it's a system that does work. Know that we spent over an hour tonight listening to public comments and discussing it to some degree. So things are never ignored. They're always, if I'm looking down, it's because I'm writing something down because I want to remember it. So, you know, just part of the process. And I feel like tonight was an example of the fact that our meetings are working the way they're supposed to, and our feedback loop. And I'm happy that we've been able to receive communication ahead of time and have, you know, conversations going into this meeting, too.
Here, here to everything that you just said, I just want to say that the through-line of the district goals, which of course are established alongside the board and then the administration and the cabinet, was really clear tonight for us. And I have to say, like Mary Rose, I've also been here for six years. And I know that when I first started, and I asked a lot of questions, and still do, you're very generous with me in responding to my questions. And over time, you've actually been much more generous about responding to questions, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the vulnerability. And I just want to say that when we look at those scores up there, we say, oh, my goodness, how are our kids only here where they could be here? Look at all of this work that we're doing, and how can we do more? That's really vulnerable, right? Like, you have to be really vulnerable to show up to a public-facing meeting and share with us these data points that aren't perfect, but we're a work in progress, and this is a learning institution. And so for me, as a mom, right, with a background in education, with someone who's here, not because I have any sort of magical superpower to decide who's hired and fired, because I do not, and that is not why I'm here anyway, but to ask hard questions that make us be vulnerable about where we're succeeding and where we need a little bit more support, I just want to say thank you. Because when you're vulnerable, that's where you grow. And so it's hard, and this is all hard, and y'all are real hard, but like, we're listening to you, and we're taking our notes, and we're asking hard questions, right? And we're doing it in the way that we're supposed to do it, in the way that boards are supposed to do it, which is not overstepping our roles, but enacting our roles with the way that we are supposed to, so that our district, our taxes, my taxes, your taxes, all of our taxes, are not spent on litigation, but instead on programs to help our kids learn to read and write fluently, and engage in math, and higher-order thinking, and STEM, right? Like, anyway. I also want to say with regards to thanking you for listening to us and the public comments that we don't have to have, we actually, in the past couple of years, have instituted two public comments for the sole purpose of having comments directly related to the conversation that we're going to have. Specifically so, the board can ask questions of the folks presenting that are representative of the community's questions. So if you feel like you show up and you feel like you ask questions, and we don't do anything with it, I will assure you that you are incorrect. Because when you show up and you ask a question at the beginning about something that is in the meeting, we ask those questions in the meeting. And we might not like the answer, and you might not like the answer, but we get an answer. And then the second public comment at the end, where you can bring up things that were not part of the meeting, but you still feel like were unanswered, right? So we are doing everything that we can in this board that is widely varied in personalities and opinions, but still functional, to include voice. And I think that we've been really vulnerable tonight. I think we've been really vulnerable in the past couple of years, and hopefully we'll continue to be this way. And because of that, I hope we'll all grow, just like our schools are growing, just like our kids are growing. So thank you for everyone to show up, thank you for you for showing up. We'll keep trying, please keep showing up. We're gonna keep trying. Thank you.
And Dr. Blanch, I just wanted to thank you also for when we had some questions, for taking the time to carve out for that, to share information with us.
Absolutely. I guess I'll just close it. So I want to thank my colleagues for being here this evening and representing the schools and the faculty and all of their work, again, in their next best thinking for steps this year. And I like the way Mark, you said, it's, you know, it's like, you're already into this year. And so, I think we're getting close to the first quarter being behind us and stuff. So, again, that work moving forward is clearly important. And I was very appreciative to hear from the board that it connected better than it has before. And that's our intent, to make sure that it is as connected as possible so that, again, we live into this kind of world, and the acronyms and all those things and stuff like that. So for that feedback, it's greatly appreciated. So then hopefully then, we've done a reasonable job of presenting the connectivity across our four schools and for our children and things. So, thank you for that part. Again, I know we've got some of our community members that are here now, and many are here earlier. Again, as I mentioned before, I have some meetings already scheduled with folks that I've met with. We have more coming up. Those are the conversations. Again, I will say the same thing. A specific personnel matter, we will not talk about personnel matters. Again, the reality is, that's from your legal counsel. Any legal counsel will say, you do not talk about those in conversation. What we did talk about, I thought, and I'll just reiterate a little bit here, is the process. When you hire on an employee in the school district, as much as when you hired any of these folks around this table, or myself, or teachers, or our custodian, or our maintenance worker that's starting tonight, there is a process that goes through in there. And so depending upon that position, what level of committee. In this position, we had, I think even one of the parents woke up because we had sent some email communication back. As far as the number of individuals that were involved in the process, the number of rounds, which was four, involved in that process. There were members from the seat committee that were all blanketed last year, over 50 members. Hey, would you like to be a part of the interview process? And we have students off of that seat committee, as well as administrators, and walking that part through. And then collectively, that group went through kind of an initial blind assessment to begin with. So the initial screening was not a conversation about people. It was like, here's the set, you look at it, and you come back with the highest rated individuals that you believe should go to the next round. So all those blind ratings were completed. And as you walk through those number of pieces to the final candidate that was presented to myself, and then out of that, one last to the board. And as far as looking at information, as far as research, certainly athlete reference checks were completed on those, as they are with every position, even the ones that we spoke about tonight with, like, our maintenance employee that was gonna be brought up at the next meeting and things. And so that's part of that process that goes through there. I would say we're more involved with our community. I'm thinking, looking at Mark right now, I'm thinking, we have often our children at the highest level participate in those interview committees. They're 17, 18-year-old young adults that are part of that conversation or experience in the classroom. So the high school is a point where we say, let's bring that voice into the table there. Even in this experience, we had those candidates go through and do a kind of a focus group conversation with students about, hey, what would this school look like? How can I create support, creating a very strong inclusive environment? And the kid spoke, and they kind of talked about that. So again, involving kids in that interview process will go through there. So then that first piece, and that's the process we would look at. And then, so if we look at, what's that purpose or the role? We've spoken about it here, and I think our family members spoke about it as well, too. The role of making sure that we create as caring and inclusive a learning environment as we possibly can. And that's the reality of it, is that we have in the time, in the past before, had some outside folks kind of come in and help. But the reality is, is that we're seeing more and more challenges, not just in our school walls, and frankly, in our local and larger community and the national community, where we are seeing that students unfortunately are having some pretty horrific experiences within Scott schools. And then what we're number one piece, we're hearing back from our faculty is, how can the district help us to have these types of conversations when they arise in the classroom? Life happens outside, and it doesn't get dropped at the classroom doors. Those experiences and those challenges and those things that kids are experiencing come into the classrooms? So some teachers may feel more comfortable than others about having a difficult conversation. If there's a racial or some sort of a slur that's dropped in a classroom, some teachers may feel okay with that, others may, I'm not exactly sure how to do this. So working that conversation through. So that role here, again, I want to be clear, is there's no program that Ms. Gonzo is bringing forth. The piece here is to talk about what are the local community needs here. Again, the seat meeting next week. And then following up with what our teachers are saying directly, can you help me, my team, be able to have conversations in the classroom, frankly, when they present? When difficult things in life happen outside of our school bounds? When we have incidences where we hear from our family neighbors. Again, I'm here, from neighbors in our community, neighbors that, you know, I may see it shopping, or I may even be in coaching with their kids or things like that. I hear the stories and the experiences where, look, this happened to my child. And it's nobody, and nobody who's sitting here today wants any of that for their child. And that's the intent. How can I then help the teacher ultimately help the student? Because we are an educational institution. This is not a punitive place. So yes, there may be consequences. But the reality is, is how can we then support and say, let's talk about how we got to this spot, and how can we get back? And then kind of go through and reconnect and create some better establishments. We start with Primrose at our youngest grade level, with five-year-old children, working on the responsive classroom, talking about morning meetings. And when things don't go well, that's talk about that. Unfortunately, that continues to grow. And to be frank, this community and the people saw this last year. It's just my estimate, when those masks came off last year, and all of a sudden, you hadn't been able to talk for like a year and a half, you had the mask on, we saw a significant spike in increase of our discipline matters, specifically related to racial issues, homophobic issues, issues getting after students with their family, discipline. We saw that very, very clearly. And it was right there, you know, correlation doesn't exactly relate to causation, but the fact of the matter is, it's something we've been doing for quite a while, and to see that change. So how can we support then the children and the students, and hopefully the families, to think about, how can I have these conversations in the community and work through that through? So, again, that's that purpose of that role of that part. And the last piece, any job, again, as I mentioned before, is how do you go ahead and what's that performance look like? It's tied directly back to the identified learning targets, be it for an administrator, or be it for a teacher, or one of our custodian colleagues, or a front-office employee. They each have their roles and responsibilities and job descriptions. And then each year, those elements go through a specific rubric identified. In this case, it's our Somers Faculty Association, and there's a specific rubric in there that ties back to the direct performance expected in this role. And that's the evaluative piece in that regard. So I want to make sure that those steps are clearly identified. Again, it's not any different in any position, but that is where we're looking at in this position. So hopefully, I addressed some of the questions that the community had this evening or before. And again, as I've offered, my office has coordinated many meetings, the learning office has. We'll have those conversations if those need be. And again, so we'll continue that work. Again, I know we have some community members who were asked from Susan's presentation last week to be on the seat committee, so we're looking forward to that. And then also, we'll have some more folks based on my conversations today that will also be joining us next week. And I know we have two board member liaison members that'll be at the seat meeting next week. Just as a note, so our, tonight, you have a lovely event kind of coming back after COVID at the high school. I think it's-
They put the fire out.
Put the fire out, so, plant fire. So we were back to the bonfire this evening at the high school. It's been quite a number of years, so I'm just thankful for, again, led by the children. School, here's the things we can create connection and involvement in our schools. And so that was a piece. So I did want to note, just in case you heard that there are some fire engines at the school, at the high school, it's all planned. They came, they delivered the sand, and do all that stuff. So that was all planned, and it's out. So, thank you, Gordon.
Thank you. All right, be it resolved that this October 11th Board of Ed workshop be adjourned. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.